Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 13th, 2017 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. If you would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Again, welcome to you all. Thank you for coming out for our city council meeting. For those of you who are not aware, we just did a walking tour of possible renovation of City Hall. So that's why we were just a touch late in getting back to chambers, but we thank, appreciate your indulgence. Mr. Shields, it looks like the first item of business is a VDOT update on I-66, is that correct? All right. So why don't we head on with that? Ms. Messner, are you going to?
Well, we do have Amanda Baxter here. From the Virginia Department of Transportation, she's the project manager for the I-66 Inside the Beltway project, and she's here to provide an update for the city council on the status of that project. December 4th is coming, and that's a big date when the tolling will begin on the inside, but I'll let Ms. Baxter provide that update and any questions or other inquiries the council might have.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate it.
So it's 21 days away. December 4th is our target date. Last week at the Northern Virginia District, our office, Secretary's Office, joined by our Commissioner, did a media event where we announced the target date of December 4th, which is a Monday, to start the express lane project on I-66 Inside the Beltway. So I'm going to update you on that, and then I'm also going to get into the upcoming widening project eastbound. So one thing I wanted to point out, and you all have a card of the rules of the road and just some general information, I did leave some of these on the table outside for the public as well. This is a handy tool that tells you the hours, reminds you that everybody needs an EZ Pass, everybody needs an EZ Pass to be on those lanes, and then it gives you some information about how the tolls are going to work. We have a minimum of two signs as you enter the lanes. We have an advisory sign to give you an idea of what the toll would be. Then you'll approach a confirmation sign. That confirmation sign will be your destination that's on that sign will be the trip price that you lock in when you enter the system. So we start that December 4th. We are tolling in the peak direction, eastbound, 5:30 in the morning to 9:30, so that's a change over today's existing HOV. And then we're also tolling westbound from 3:00 to 7:00. We're initially opening up this road, HOV 2 will ride for free. However, when I-66 outside the Beltway opens in the year 2022, the entire I-66 corridor will transition to an HOV 3 facility, so HOV 3 will be for free by the year 2022. And can't stress enough, and our studies show that everyone does this two weeks before, but get an EZ Pass if you don't have one. EZ Pass, the regular ones, that's if you're always going to ride alone, you might want to hop on and off, you need to get a regular one. If you anticipate to be a car puller, even if you're a part-time car puller, you can exchange your regular EZ Pass or get a new EZ Pass to Flex, and you can designate yourself as an HOV trip, and then you will not be charged the toll. We have partnered with the Virginia State Police, and we have increased State Police as part of this project. There will still be HOV enforcement. There is a mechanism on the gantries that allows the police to know the settings of everyone's transponder, so if you're violating that setting, you designate yourself as HOV and you're not, you will still be subject to a civil penalty under the Virginia Code for HOV violation. And that has an increasing fine up to $1,000, as well as points on your license each time that happens, and it's always based on your first offense. So it takes, I think, five years to wipe that out. So it's definitely an incentive to either play by the rules or find a carpool to give you a reason to not be subject to the toll if that's something you're trying to avoid. Another good part of this project is that all the toll revenue, this is a Virginia Department of Transportation-run facility, and all of this toll revenue will be going to multimodal projects, and I'll talk about that in a second. And then lastly, I'll end on an update with our widening project. So this is just a map of the express lanes. You'll see different segments on this map, but this is trip-based pricing, so you're not charged for each segment, you're charged for your destination. So if you start at the Capital Beltway and you're going into DC, you're going to be charged for that trip. You're not going to be charged at every single gantry. Your trip will be set on that initial sign. We are complete with construction. We've done a lot of testing. We continue to do testing. We're actually in another form of testing this week. And like I indicated, our target date is December 4th. There's a lot that will go in in making that decision on December 4th. We will be setting up a weekly, a daily call in advance, so weather plays into us making the go-live decision, but there's a lot of factors that we'll take into consideration to go live on December 4th. This is just an update on the first round of multimodal projects. This round of multimodal projects was funded by the Commonwealth of Virginia to kick off, if you will, the multimodal improvements along the corridor. The Northern Virginia Transportation Commission is delivering this commuter choice program, and based on this first round of projects, they are providing 5,000 new choices, new trips, to move people through this corridor on this program alone. They are currently in the next round of selection. I understand that you all have a couple of projects in right now for the next round of selection with MBTC, but that call for projects is ongoing. And again, it will likely happen each year, every other year, that these toll revenues will be funding a list of projects, and that budget of how much will be spent will be provided by the Commonwealth each year after we go through our auditing, because all of the toll revenue collected on this corridor after we operate and maintain the system will be entirely given to new transportation choices to benefit this corridor. This is the eastbound widening map. The red line on the map is the limits of the eastbound widening of I-66. This is a four-mile section of the interstate. We are able to do all of this widening within our right-of-way. Let me get to the next slide here to give you an idea. It's between the Dulles Connector Road and Exit 71 in Bolston. We are replacing nearly 12,000 linear feet of sound walls, noise walls, along the corridor. Some are existing noise walls that we're taking out and replacing, some don't exist, and we're proposing to construct them, but there is a process that goes along with the construction of those walls where the public can actually, the public who benefits from those walls gets a say in whether or not they want the walls. We also, I'm going to talk about a couple off-ramp improvements that we're doing along the corridor. I'm going to update you on the WNOD trail, grade-separated crossing over Lee Highway. And then also, there's another sub-project that we're delivering as part of the eastbound widening, and that is the ramp-to-ramp connection at eastbound Route 7 here, Exit 66. This is just a typical section to show you how we're squeezing in that third lane within our right-of-way. For the majority of the project, will actually be Section 1 that you see here, where we have a lane to the inside. About 2/3 of the project is comprised of putting, encroaching towards the metro in the middle and putting the new lane to the inside, and then the remaining will be spread across either all the lanes or the outer lanes. But we are really constrained along here, and we also want to have areas to continue our enforcement during the tolling period. This is one of the ramp improvements that we're introducing as part of the project. Right at Exit 69, as you exit towards Lee Highway, where we're going to build the grade separation, today you only have one lane that you can exit, and certainly the demand here and the amount of people that get off here, two lanes would provide a better storage area and a place for people to get off the interstate so that traffic can move more efficiently. You can also see where we're going to do a small lane drop on Fairfax Drive, and really what we're trying to accomplish here is the ability for people to be at the ready when they get to the intersection in the right lane, in the right lane that they need to be in to make those movements, because there's lots of different ways. You can go straight through that and then have to go across to the metro, and we're going to introduce some new signage there to just help people position themselves a little bit better as those two roads come together here. We're doing the same thing here at Bolston, and this is the termini of the project, or the furthest east of the terminus. We're adding two lanes here. People somewhat do this during rush hour today. We have a lot of shoulder space through there, but people are trying to move off and get off the interstate here, so we're going to re-stripe this area and introduce a second lane again to provide that storage. So a couple of things to talk about, the bridge, and I'm going to update you on where we are with the procurement of this. We have three workshops to lay out the look and feel of what this bridge is. We, in our engineering team, face a lot of design constraints through here. We have the power lines. We have to maintain a clearance over 29. We have a fire access easement at the tail end of where Fairfax Drive terminates there by the condos, where a fire truck needs to be able to traverse to be able to fight fires from the side of that building between the trail and I-66 and the building. And we also have an Arlington Historic Resource, that coal trestle there, and the resource itself is the coal trestle. And all of those things, we needed to figure out. It was really, truly threading a needle through here, and somewhat of that dictated the type of bridge that we could build through here. So we are proposing a five-girder bridge. It gives us a very slim look through this area, and we need everything that we can get as far as vertical and horizontal clearances from those power lines and the sag of those power lines, as well as being able to get people under that bridge. We have about a 17-foot clearance. VDOT, we actually prefer a 17 and 1/2-foot clearance, but ASHTO allows us to do 17 feet, and we actually are taking the design waiver and doing the ASHTO clearance just to be able to get this bridge in, in all the features that we're proposing. So this was the last bridge that we presented at the third of the workshops. We let people look at what type of abutments they would like, a finish on the abutments. We gave them a choice. We gave the public a choice of what the pier shape could look like, the color of the bridge, what the fence and railings will look like, and then also lighting. So that's something that's changed, the lighting through here. These poles that you see on the bridge will actually not be incorporated. After our third workshop, we've got a lot of feedback that here we have more of a contemporary bridge that fits into the more contemporary redevelopment through there. I mean, we have a self-storage center. They actually chose a pretty contemporary building, and then the condo area. But then we had a more traditional lighting package, and the reason why, those are the types of lights that VDOT, we would have Dominion maintain for us, because we don't maintain any types of lighting. So we had proposed those because those are the only ones that we could actually have maintained for us, and a lot of people, that wasn't good enough. So Nova Parks stepped up and said, you know, "If you can come up with a different type of lighting package, we, Parks, we will maintain that lighting package." So we incorporated a lighting package similar to one that we're getting ready, actually it's under construction over near the Tysons area, where there's lighting at the footpath as well as on the railing to project the light down, so the whole area will be illuminated through there, but it will actually, won't be on poles, it will actually be incorporated into the actual structure of the bridge. So that's something that we incorporated here, and since it's a special type of lighting package, Nova Parks stepped up to maintain that for us. This is the site plan that we presented, and this was a work in progress. A couple of things that we heard were, there's still at-grade pedestrian movements. Not everyone just goes across, although that's the majority of the movements, and that's what we're accommodating with the bridge, but there's still that walkability that we wanted to maintain and in the future East Falls Church planning. So we have incorporated, and we're making improvements to some of the existing walking features through here. I'm going to try to not turn this off, see if this works. I don't think my pointer works through here. Hold on, I think I can use a mouse. Here we go. So if you see here, this, thanks Cindy. If you see through the, through this area here, we have a proposed sound wall that would come through here. There are different things that we're looking at with construction of this where it can actually, noise mitigation may be able to be incorporated into some of the bridge design as well, so there could be some opportunities that this could change through here. But what we're trying to do is, there is an East Falls Church plan to potentially have pedestrian improvements through here to the metro. We want to be able to maintain that. We're going to be keeping the same at-grade pedestrian movements here, and then incorporating a lot of hardscape features here to give people a sense of place through the area underneath and around the bridge. Here is the coal trestle, actually further off, this is the match line to here. Here's the historic coal trestle area. This was a site plan that the Arlington Historic Landmarks had approved, and we're going to incorporate that for them and give a viewing area for that coal trestle. So this is a feature that we've incorporated into our package, and we just recently, and we're still at the tail end of the procurement process for a design builder. We have issued a notice of intent to award to the Lane Construction Company, but you know, that is out right now. We issued that until, I think, Saturday. There's a standard protest period for that, and once Saturday comes, we'll take it to the Commonwealth Transportation Board in December for the final award. With that being said, it gives them the opportunity, we instructed them based on, we provided them all the comments from all the workshops and all of the actual design elements, and if it was to be deviated from, they would need to go back out to the public and rework some of the things that we made a commitment to for the public. So we are closing out the procurement and hopeful that the plan is stuck to, that we've coordinated, but again, we will be out to the public if we have some modifications that we need to make. I'm going to end here and then talk a little bit about where we are in schedule. This is a separate project, however, delivering it with the widening. It had its own separate NEPA document, its own environmental document, but essentially what we are looking to do also, and this is in the spirit of mobility along I-66, is to provide a better eastbound connection to get to the metro and the schools over here. Currently, if you're traveling eastbound on I-66, you need to exit on 7 and come all the way down, and you're immediately met with your 25 mile an hour slowdown sign here, your speed limit sign, but then you have to weave all the way over to Haycock, make a left, then come up here and go back to the metro. We wanted to improve that connection so you didn't have a lot of that traffic demand at Haycock as the city looks to improve the walkability through your redevelopment here. We are introducing a ramp-to-ramp connection where you can actually exit I-66 and come through and connect up with the existing loop and modify and improve that, and you could just come in and slip over to the metro, and then get all of that demand off of Route 7 for the metro. So that project was introduced a little bit later in the game, but a great improvement for the mobility through the metro area there. And I'll end here and open it up for any questions, but here we are with schedule. Again, we're implementing the multimodal projects. We are getting ready to open up our express lanes in December. We are on the cusp of officially awarding our design build at the CTV meeting in December, and then they would be able to begin construction in 2018. Contractually, and something I brought with me today, Mark Gibney, I think he's been with me here one time, he's going to be the project manager for construction. He works for VDOT. We are talking a little bit about some of the incentives and disincentives we put in our design bill contract. We've incentivized our contractor to open the eastbound lanes of I-66, the new third lane, that is, by November of 2020. So that lane needs to be open. Now, there's other project elements, noise walls, the bridge, those types of things, but we've incentivized them to open that up. If they don't open it up by November 10th of 2020, they actually go into a disincentive where they're actually paying the Commonwealth $18,500 a day until they open up that lane. If they deliver it ahead of schedule, the maximum incentive that they can obtain is $1.1 million for getting it ahead of schedule. So we do that to encourage our contractors to, to speed up the delivery. And then the project itself, the final completion date, has an incentive of $240,000 with a disincentive of $4,000 a day, and that will be in October of 2021, so a year following. So all the things that I just talked about outside of that third lane being open, noise walls, the WNOD bridge, the ramp at Route 7, all of those other things are moving parts that the contractor can put into its schedule, but our focus is getting that capacity open. And another thing I wanted to point out, which I think is a sensitive public point, we work really hard to put some framing around when we replace noise walls or reconstruct noise walls. If we have to take down trees or a noise wall to put up a new noise wall, we've instructed our design builder that until they're allowed to do that, they have to have shop drawings of the walls that they're going to actually construct, approved by VDOT. 30% of the materials need to be ready to go and delivered to the site, and they need to start construction of the new barrier within 30 days of removing trees or the existing wall. And that barrier has to be completed within 90 days of them starting to put it up. So we've really put a lot of thought into making sure that somebody's not ripping out a wall and leaving a gaping hole for years while we are doing all the construction. And the nice thing about this project is because we have sound walls and chunks through there, it's not all one continuous wall, like a lot of our interstate work that we do along the 95 corridor, is that they can do it in sections where they're actually fabricating walls. And I'll say with a lot of the projects happening in Northern Virginia right now, 395, I-66 outside the Beltway, I-66 inside the Beltway, the fabrication of noise walls is just going to be a struggle because there's just a lot of materials needed for this area, and there's a lot of proposed noise walls, but we feel really comfortable with how we framed the language in our proposal to make sure that commitment's there to the public, to make sure that we're not leaving these gaping holes along the corridor. And so I can be clear, also, the green sound walls along the corridor around the Locust Drive area, it's about a, I want to say, I think it's a little over 3,000 feet. We're taking out all those green walls, and we're just replacing them with new walls, the concrete-paneled walls. Generally, like I indicated, the public gets to vote whether or not they want a sound wall. The walls that we're just replacing because of their disrepair, there'll be a no-vote wall. I mean, we're just replacing those walls. And then we're also coming in on all the bridges. You can even see where we made improvements on the westbound side, and we left kind of like the old metal wall, and then we have this nice, brand-new wall on either side. We're taking out all the old metal walls on the bridges and replacing them with a new lightweight wall, just to provide a better look and some better noise mitigation along the corridor. Now I'm going to stop and turn it back to you and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work. We know you've been working on this for some time now.
Just three years.
That's right, that's right. But thank you so much. We appreciate the thorough update. I imagine we do have a fair amount of questions. Why don't we start on that end with Ms. Hardy and work our way down?
Great. Thank you for joining us tonight in the informative update. What is VDOT doing to monitor any bailout traffic to secondary roads? And if so, if there are impacts and we see degradations in our intersections, what are the plans to address those?
Sure. So before we turn, before we start the tolling, we have been actively collecting data points along the corridor. We actually worked with the UVA Research Center. We use them often. They're a transportation center that we work closely with at VDOT to do some pre-data collection of those intersections. So now we have our preconditions. That's a little bit over and above the traffic counts that we did for the initial modeling on the project. And then after the fact, after we go live with the tolling, we will start collecting new traffic points. I will suspect that we will probably not initiate that until the tail end of the school season. We only like to collect traffic anyway when school's in session, but we also want some time for what we call ramp-up of the express lane systems. I mean, we're going to open up December 4th, and it's, you know, it's just going to be a lot of traffic management, and we're going to have to get through what we call the ramp-up period and learning curve of opening up in all facility express lanes part-time. So it's the first of its kind nationwide, and we are definitely, with our Northern Virginia regional operations, we're gearing up for that. But once that level is out to a point that we're comfortable, we'll come back and collect additional traffic data to understand the operation of intersections, as well as volumes that could be on those roads compared to what they were before we told, and then work on different ways to better manage the traffic through a period of time. You know, right now, all we have is what traffic is like today. We have a two-and-a-half-hour period of HOV. Traffic behaves in a certain way because of that, and now traffic is going to have to change, and people will behave differently based on these express lanes. So it is going to be kind of a change to the overall system that we'll have to work closely with our local partners. I know Arlington, they maintain all of their signal timings as well, and we'll be working closely with the localities to get an understanding of what other people are seeing and what our data is showing us. So it's not a stagnant process. It will be an ongoing coordination with the localities.
Just one quick call-up. Is there any budget set aside for kind of any remediation or, I guess, issues we might face?
We don't have a set aside budget for that. I think one of the things that we've been coordinating with MBTC is finding different improvements that we can make through TDM improvements along the corridor, or maybe some more bus routes to have more trips through the arterials and give people better choices. But I think it's a system that needs to really mature. This is a 40-year agreement with MBTC, and it's, I don't think it's going to be perfect on day one, but we are definitely going to work to try to get the choices and the mobility through the larger corridor. So right now, no budget, but I think that there's different revenue sources in the future that can be tapped into to remediate and remedy these things.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, do you have anything? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thanks a lot, and thank you for your long work with this project. So if you were telling the public, these are the three things you need to do to prepare for December 4th, what would you tell them?
Get your EZ Pass, number one. Number two, know the rules of the road. I think that's another really important thing, to understand how it works. We got an interesting question during the media advisory. Somebody said, "Well, if I get on the express, if I'm on the lanes and then 5:30 happens in the morning, and I got on the lanes at like 5:25, but I'm still in the lanes, at 5:30, you will be told, just like HOV today. If you're on the lanes during HOV and you happen to get on the lanes before it, it's not like you beat the time. If you're on the lanes, you are subject to the HOV regulation." So that's another thing, is know the rules of the road so you're not confused on how the road operates, how the tolling operates. Plus, there will be messaging in advance of us turning on the tolls to remind the public that the tolls are coming on, that ticketing will be in place. We will also be displaying prices as the system knows, as traffic is approaching the system, and we know the travel times for the trips, pricing will start being displayed so people have a good awareness. I think that's the second thing. And then the third thing is, as, you know, right now, I can suspect that on Monday, December 4th, everyone that's driving to work today might just probably do the same thing on December 4th. And I think on December 4th, it's going to change driver behavior, I'm sure, because we're managing those lanes. We want the lanes to run more reliably, and we want people to get in touch with commuter choice to figure out if they can make a better transportation choice through the corridor, if there's something that works better for them. The intent of this project is not necessarily to cater to the person driving alone, it's to cater to providing the most person throughput that this corridor can possibly handle, because right now, even adding this third lane here eastbound, and we have one little piece of westbound that we have a set of plans for that we could possibly widen in the future, that's it. This road will be three lanes. I mean, I'm suspecting at least while I'm still doing this, and, you know, at the end of the day, you get to DC, and that bridge is DC's bridge, and that stoplight on Constitution is DC's stoplight, and there's really nothing else 10 lanes in each direction of I-66 Inside the Beltway will do for anybody. So I think people need to get in touch with the transportation choices that they're making as they move through this corridor, and they can either adjust their trips, they might find a better way to get there to work, and those are the types of decisions and choices that we're trying to provide the traveling public.
Okay, thanks a lot for that. Now let me ask you two bottom-line questions. So if you're going HOV 2 now, how long can you continue to do HOV 2, but you've got to have the EZ Pass Flex, right?
Correct.
So it's EZ Pass regardless, pretty much of anything?
Matter what.
Okay.
Matter what.
So if you have the EZ Pass
Okay, thanks a lot for that. Now let me ask you two bottom-line questions. So if you're going HOV 2 now, how long can you continue to do HOV 2, but you've got to have the EZ Pass Flex, right?
Correct.
So it's EZ Pass regardless, pretty much of anything?
Matter of what.
Okay.
Matter of what.
So if you have the EZ Pass Flex, it's still HOV 2 during the morning going in and during the evening coming out.
Correct.
Different hours, but it's still HOV 2 until how long? And then it moves up to HOV 3?
Sure. Right now, Outside the Beltway is scheduled to open at the end of 2020. At that point in time, between December 4th, 2017 and 21 days, to the end of 2020, it will be an HOV 2 facility and then the entire system will increase to HOV 3. And there's a few things that we're doing to prepare for that transition outside the Beltway. We are in the process of constructing a new park-and-ride lot. There's two more early-delivery park-and-ride lots that they're required to deliver early in the project. And that is to really start engaging the public and starting that I-95 slug culture to move more people through the corridor. If we can even get a third of what 95 is doing with their slugging and their commuter and their carpooling, 66 will be much better for all of us as far as just getting the amount of people as this region continues to grow. So that's really what we're looking to do.
Okay. And then one other point to be clear about is that you're not tolling coming out from DC in the morning.
Currently, no, but it is in the plan in the future. So right now, we have it in the long-range plan to have that option. That actually was a part of the project originally when we rolled out the project. And I think time will tell. Will it happen before outside opens? It may, but we had held it in the plan as a placeholder. That traffic right now is actually, makes up 40% of all the traffic throughout the corridor heading in the opposite direction. So I think it just will take some time to determine if, as this region grows and that traffic needs to be better managed, we wanted to make sure we retain that tool in our toolbox to also introduce it. And obviously, our system is capable of doing both directions, but we are starting with the peak hour, peak rush hours, peak direction.
So, and again, I'm just doing this to lay this out clearly as to what people can expect on December 4th. So if you're not during the expanded hours in the morning and you're going in toward DC, it's not toll, is that right?
And you don't need an EZ Pass? Yes, it's not toll and you don't need an EZ Pass.
Okay. And then it's not toll coming west from DC until the afternoon?
3 o'clock.
And those are expanded hours?
Correct.
And that'll be HOV 2 for the foreseeable future and you'll need an EZ Pass though, even if you're HOV 2?
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, sound walls, which is something I've heard our constituents mention a lot. What I heard you say was all the green metal walls are coming down and they're being replaced. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One other thing, there is one vehicle type that does not need an EZ Pass and that's a motorcycle. So it's the only type of vehicle that does not need an EZ Pass. They are not a toll vehicle at all. And they've never been subject to HOV regulations and they also do not require an EZ Pass. And that's the rule on all of our express lanes in the Commonwealth.
Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baxter. I have two questions about the ends of the project in Falls Church. The first is about the W N O D bridge.
Sure.
And I've asked you this every time we've talked about it, which is, when will there be an opportunity to design what the bridge looks like, to be able to have a welcome-to-Falls Church, welcome-to-Arlington as part of that bridge? Is that once your design-build firm is finalized?
So the bridge that I showed tonight is in general what the bridge will look like.
Right.
Unless they deviate from some of the pier options or the color or the fence railing. As far as the emblems or adding on any other, we do not have that proposed. We did not instruct our design builder to incorporate that. I think that's something that between the City of Falls Church and Arlington will have to be coordinated because it is fully in Arlington. And, you know, we have had that conversation with them as well. And honestly, the type of structure that's going in there, it wouldn't necessarily be concrete through that area, so you'd have to put some type of emblem or something else. And there could be some after-the-fact type of placemaking that could happen through coordination, but that will likely, VDOT will have to be at the table, of course.
Right.
But I think that that will be something between the City of Falls Church and Arlington that will have to be coordinated.
So when in the process do we need to do that?
You know, in the process, I think now's a great time to start. However, I don't think that they're going to tackle this. I haven't seen their schedule.
Yeah.
Because we're getting ready to award. But honestly, I think that starting that conversation early next year to find out any opportunities, we have something called a Stage 1 Bridge Package that gets submitted to VDOT so we can approve their bridge set. And once we see where that actually falls in the project, we can certainly communicate that to Ms. Mester and let them know. Let you all know our schedule for the Stage 1 Bridge Plans. But at this point in time, it's really hard to tell.
Right.
When that will come through. But that's probably a good opportunity to make those types of adjustments.
Okay.
And it would be a change order for VDOT, so we would have to come in and work with you all on that.
Okay. I just don't want to miss that window. I don't want to be here two years from now and say, "Oh, we didn't do it."
Right. I understand.
So I just want to make sure we can plug in as often as possible. So Ms. Mester, you'll keep us apprised of the deadlines and the process.
I'll continue to work.
Thank you. And then the other one is about the flyover ramp from Route 66 around to West Falls Church Metro. So every time you've come here before, we have said, "We'd like to someday do something on that campus." But now we are going to do something on that campus. And we have had a lot of conversations about making sure that any school construction that happens is tied into any commercial construction. And we really like to make sure that whatever construction is happening there is also tied into our project so that we're at least talking to each other because they are going to butt one another.
Sure. All of these improvements will be done within our limited access right-of-way. There will be an adjustment made. There's like a small green noise wall as that ramp touches down on the east side of 7 there. That will be rebuilt and relocated, not, it will be the noise walls of today's time and not the green walls. We don't even have those anymore. So we would adjust that, but everything will be done within our right-of-way. I have been asked to attend one of the planning sessions for the redevelopment through that area. It looks great and I think that there's a lot of opportunity to provide that future connectivity to all the redevelopment through the metro. But we'll be in our lane, you'll be on your lane, and hopefully that draws some better safety improvements as you want to introduce the pedestrian movements across 7 there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Duncan?
Just one question. So the Dulles Access Road, it's been my custom that when I'm going out there or coming back from there to drop somebody off at the airport, that I would use portions of 66 to do that, even if I was not a hub under current standards. Does that change now?
That exemption is dismissed with this project. So we've been out to the Airport Council, MO has had us out to Dulles, and everyone will need an EZ Pass, even if you are traveling to and from the airport. A lot of people do have EZ Pass because of the toll road through there, but people using the airport access lanes, for example, or maybe doing trips between Reagan and that airport, will have to at least get an EZ Pass, EZ Pass Flex. But that is an exemption. There's two exemptions that were dismissed. The, or it was the Dulles Airport Access Use and that exemption during the HOV hours as well as 18,000 remaining hybrid tags that were eligible. So they've received two letters from the DMV at this point to alert them that, and we did this also, this transition when we switched 95 to express lanes, we've eliminated the hybrid users from being able to use that. So everybody will need an EZ Pass and everyone will have to meet the HOV requirements if they want a free trip.
If I don't go to or from Dulles during the rush hour windows though, do I need an EZ Pass?
Do not.
Okay.
You do not. And it was a challenging sign package that we had to put together. If you've driven the corridor and you could see a lot of panels that are blank, it'll turn on when we toll. It will say toll in yellow, it'll say EZ Pass in purple. We wanted to be able to have, it's a part-time facility, it's just different, and we had to come up with a sign package that was clearly letting the public know when all lanes would require an EZ Pass and when all lanes would not require an EZ Pass. So if we've missed something, you know, we will definitely continue to look at how we've signed everything, but it has been quite a process to make sure we can get everyone moving safely through there.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything, Mr. Z?
Just one question is, do you foresee coming back here sometime next spring to tell us how it's working out?
I can start upon any invitation. I would love to come to the City of Falls Church. So absolutely.
We have enough data by next spring, six months of operation?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hopefully, the traffic won't be too bad getting over here.
I'll still show my face, but yeah, I mean, hopefully, we, you know, do I think we're going to knock it out of the park on December 4th? I hope knocking it out of the park for VDOT is providing everyone a safe trip. That's priority number one for us. Getting everything else to work perfectly and getting people to adjust how they move is a whole other part of this project that just, everyone in this area is just going to have to give us all time to figure out how we're going to move through this corridor.
Okay, I've just got a couple question comments. I have to say, I've sat through this several times and I'm still somewhat confused. If you're driving out west on 66 during rush hour 3 to 7, you can either have two people in your car, in which case you pay nothing, you still have an EZ Pass Flex in your car, but you pay nothing.
Correct.
If you have one person in your car, you can still go on I-66, you just pay a toll, which will vary depending on the amount of traffic that's on there. Is that right?
That's perfect, yes.
And if I keep on going past outside the Beltway, I cross the Beltway, starting on July, December 4th, outside the Beltway, do I have to have two people in all the lanes or is it just as it is now?
It's the HOV lane.
Excuse me, just for the left lane?
Yeah, we're going to maintain that HOV lane through construction of the express lanes on outside the Beltway. So you'd have to get into the HOV lane. But if you're by yourself and you made the choice to pay the toll and move through 66, you would have to make sure you're out of that lane because, you know, it's not a hot lane.
But once you're past there, once you're past the Beltway, you're free to sit in traffic and not pay anything if you'd like, but by 2020 or thereabouts, you're going to have outside the Beltway tolling as well? Is that what I heard?
Correct.
So for the next three years or thereabouts, outside the Beltway, it'll basically be as it is now?
Correct.
And 2020, we'll be hearing, you'll be coming back, or your successor or someone will be coming back, telling us how it works outside the Beltway?
Absolutely.
Okay. Few comments now, not questions so much, but you heard a little bit about spillover traffic, which is a great concern to us in Falls Church because I-66 basically parallels Falls Church and Route 7 may be, or Route 29 could be an easy alternative for folks who don't want to pay a toll, no matter how, you know, great it is to ride on a highway that doesn't have many cars on it. Some people are just going to be unwilling to pay tolls.
Yep.
And we would certainly want your assistance in trying to mitigate those things. I'm not sure what those mitigation measures will be. Maybe you're not sure yet because we don't know what kind of problems are going to arise, but we certainly want you at our side throughout that process and your commitment to help us resolve those kind of issues. Because for a small city like Falls Church, it can be extremely expensive to do transportation improvements, particularly that are really benefits of region-wide, not just for our city, but help move people throughout the region. So we'd certainly want your assistance in monitoring, but also mitigating the traffic. And secondly, a point that was alluded to by the Vice Mayor, you have heard the new high school and process was approved by the voters. In addition to that flyover ramp, we very much want to have a discussion with you about a stoplight or other means to get into the school area and the economic development area, which may mean, again, the possibility of a signal somewhere in there. And so those are discussions I think we're going to want to have with you as well, is how do we get people as easily and safely into our new site as possible? And so we'd certainly appreciate your cooperation.
Sure.
In helping us do that. So I think that's all we've got, unless there's anything else to the present, we thank you again for coming out this evening and look forward to hearing from more from you.
Yep, thank you very much for having us.
Uh-huh, thank you. Okay, let's move on to our next item. Are there any oaths of office to administer, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. Let's move on to the receipt of public comment. Are there any written comments you'd like to share with us?
We received a thank-you note from the Lincoln Street neighbors for recently installed crosswalks. Sigila Ramsey of 100 Parker Street wrote about air pollution on West Street. Pang Heinam of 206 North Lee Street wrote about Kensington staff parking on surface streets. Steve Zullo of 308 North Lee Street wrote on the same topic and about cyclist behavior at crosswalks. Dave Rifkin, 126 Whittier Circle, wrote with concerns about school buses overcrowding. Shirley Conick, 301 Parker Avenue, wrote in opposition to the school bond referendum. Mary Chavez, 215 Lawton Street, wrote on behalf of her neighbors on Lawton Street regarding the Broad and Washington Project.
All right, thank you very much. We're now going to move to receipt of public comment. I do have a pretty good stack of speakers, most all of which are related to the Broad and Washington Project. You're welcome to speak now or you can wait and speak when the project is called or the item you're concerned about, particularly Broad and Washington is called. It's up to you. We do ask that you state your name for the record, your address as well for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes so that we can all get out of here and hear everyone heard at a decent hour. Let's go ahead and move on to the first speaker then. If you have not filled out a speaker slip, feel free to do so. The slips are available in the lobby. I see a new one coming down right now. Our first speaker is Laura Hall, followed by Mary Chavez.
I'll wait.
You'll wait, okay, all ready. Ms. Chavez?
I will wait as well.
You'll wait as well, okay. Our next speaker is Ed Gallic.
I will wait also.
All right. Claudia Schultz?
I will wait.
All right. Constance Mead? Come on up, welcome. What grade are you in?
I'm in ninth grade.
Ninth grade, CC.
Yeah.
That's right, that's how I know you better. Welcome, thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah. My name is Constance Mead from 700 Berry Street and I'm in ninth grade at George Mason High School. I am here tonight to encourage you to support the project at Broad and Washington. When I was a bit younger, my parents started taking me to Creative Cauldron to see shows by kids like me. I enjoyed them so much, I became one of those kids. To date, I have been in nine shows, both as a member of the Learning Theater Ensemble and in professional productions. Not only have I had so much fun meeting new kids and learning about the theater, but Creative Cauldron has taught me skills that have been helpful in my other studies in school. For example, the Learning Theater, a group of kids works together for six weeks to write a script and create a show with usually 16 performances over the course of three or four weekends. This program has given me the ability to comfortably be in front of other people, to work with other people, solve problems, and think on my feet. Not only has it given me these valuable skills, but it has given me a safe place and self-confidence. Believe me, I have relied on those skills in many of my tough classes at Mason. The Learning Theater program, as well as all of the educational programs offered by Creative Cauldron, add a lot of value to the rigorous education we have here in Falls Church City. I hope that you will vote to support the Broad and Washington Project so that all kids, not just theater kids, will have the opportunity to enjoy the theater and all it offers as I have. Thank you.
Thank you, CC. You are very well spoken. Would you like a pin, a Falls Church City pin? I understand you're also elected official, all right? You're elected in student government. Congratulations, come on up. And Elizabeth Mead?
It's a school life, so I will go.
Proud, proud mother.
I'm a mom.
Members of the City Council, my name is Elizabeth Mead from 700 Berry and I'm the mother of that young lady who you just heard from. I am one of the Board of Directors of Creative Cauldron and a resident here in the City of Falls Church. I'm also the proud mother of four children in our school system. I'm here tonight to encourage you to support the project at Broad and Washington so that Creative Cauldron can have a permanent home here in the little city. From the parent perspective, my family has long enjoyed the shows and offerings at Creative Cauldron, but what I really love is the educational programming there. My kids have taken advantage of the classes, the camps, the Learning Theater, the program, and other programs at the theater. Exposure to the theater has given them important life skills like creative thinking, collaboration, problem solving, confidence building, skills that they're benefiting from in school right now, also skills that have application in whatever career they decide to go, to decide to choose. From the citizen perspective, I love access to quality theater at affordable price that's easily get, easily get to from my house. And I really like what's happening here in the city, a building, a growing arts, vibrant arts and entertainment district that we're seeing in the city. And I think that Creative Cauldron is a big part of that. But what we really do need is a permanent home. It has been frustrating in our current space, and having a new home would not, would not only allow us to continue to grow our exceptional educational programs, but will also add to the growing environment, entertainment district that's growing in our city. I urge you to move forward on this project, and I do want to thank you, all of you, for your time and your hard work on behalf of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Marty Reserve, who's outside in the lobby. Come on in. Do you want to speak now or?
I'd like to wait.
Okay. All right, and our last speaker, at least at the President, is Mr. Tax. Would you like to speak now or would you like to wait? All right. And if anyone else would like to speak who hasn't submitted a slip, please go ahead and do so at this time. The rest of the speakers will be speaking during the, during the item. Welcome.
Hi. I'm David Tax from Clarence Downs Beachak, 130 North Washington Street, right next to the Broad Washington Project. I'm speaking about the Broad Washington Project tonight. Here I am again, a little deja vu. I was completely against Mason Row. I thought it was an ill-conceived project from the beginning, and today's a new day. I'm here to speak about the Broad and Washington Project, as I said. I was happy to see the Whole Foods drop out personally, obviously, because I think that loading dock would have been a disaster for our business and would have killed us, but also because I don't think we need another grocery store. I don't know the numbers, but I would assume that Falls Church is not buying twice as many groceries now that we have two grocery stores, nor would we triple that with the third. I look forward to hearing what exciting addition that they will propose tonight. My hope is that it'll be something that raises a lot of revenue for Falls Church and attract different people to shop and dine here. Although I'm really happy with the people that we currently have. Rebecca and I are in a kind of weird position because we consider Todd and the Hitt family friends of ours. We like Maury, he's a pretty nice guy. We know that anytime they could say that our customers can't park in their lot, fortunately, they haven't done that. And we're not against something that will be good for the city. We love the city. We try to make it a better place every day at every given opportunity. I think it's important that everybody understand a few things, though. A two to three year build out time is an eternity to a small business. We're pretty fortunate in our customers, but in every way, we rely on every month's customers and business. We do live paycheck to paycheck, and those paychecks are our customers coming in on a weekly basis, and we value them greatly. We have the pleasure of waiting on over 250,000 people a year at Clarence Downs Beachak. I'm not saying never build anything on this corner. I'm not even saying don't build this project on this corner, for sure. I'm saying that the developers, they stand to make tens of millions of dollars, and there could be some sort of protection put in place at this port, at this part in the early parts of this agreement that helps us and the neighboring small businesses. It helps us making it through the construction time mainly. Maybe some sort of financial assistance for lost revenue from prior years. We have a pretty good record. We can submit our taxes on a yearly basis, and they can see how much we've lost. If we haven't, then great, but I don't think that'll be the case. And temporary parking plan, like I said, we utilize their parking. We've utilized that parking lot for a while. They were nice enough to open it up to us even more when the people moved out of the doctor's office building. Most of the people moved out, and we definitely appreciate that. It shows they're willing to work with us. I'm just asking if that be put into writing so we know that they're going to be working with us. I don't know what that temporary parking plan could be. Could be, I don't know, could be something. And after the project is done, something that replaces the existing parking with easily accessible, ample, and free spaces for the businesses there. There is no if, our business will suffer because of this construction, as will RG's and the State Theater. The only question is whether you're going to ask the developer to help us mitigate our losses. The argument that we'll have more customers after the project is complete is only valid if we make it to when the project's complete, and RG is in the State Theater. I honestly think that Maury and his gaggle of boys don't want to hurt us. I think he's, I think that he thinks and they think that our restaurant and our restaurants, including RG's and the State Theater, will make their apartments more attractive in a very competitive and very lucrative rental market.
If you could start to wrap up, I think the buzzer went off a little while ago.
Oh, I thought that was Elijah. I almost done. I'm sure they also don't want to spend any more money than they have to. I understand that things that I'm asking you to adjust may be things that are not usual and customary, and, but nothing says the little city has to be usual and customary. That's a little bit boring. The Beachak alone is responsible for $100,000 in city revenue per year, about. So the city should have a vested interest in ours and our neighbors' continued success. Please think outside the box and help us continue to do what we love to do, and that's serve our community. Also, I'll take my extra time that you just gave me, thank you, to thank Vice Mayor Connolly and Councilman Duncan coming to the Decorative Fundraiser last night. We made a lot of money, and I'm happy to say that three of our veterans that will be doing a lot of stuff around their house and then ultimately decorating their houses are in Falls Church City. They're all on Hillwood Avenue, so look for our sign out there. And also, Vice Mayor Connolly, she won a TJ Oshie puck from the thing, so I'll do that and wrap it up.
And I got a call today saying that I won the Mad Fox gift certificate.
Oh, you did?
I am a lucky, I am a lucky man.
All right, thank you.
I owe you money, right, Mr. Tax? Okay.
All righty, thank you much. So I don't have any other speaker slips, at least folks who want to speak at this point. If there are any other speakers, please fill out a speaker slip and you can speak when the item's called. Let's go on to council requests. Are there any council requests? Okay, one. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. Before this session, we had a walk around of the proposed City Hall renovation work. And we'll be called upon to approve that, finally approve that work, I think later this month, as I understand it. So I'm interested in a couple of options. I'm interested in going back and looking at if we glassed in the front area, that would necess, that would remove the necessity for replacing the city council chambers. And I also note that we're adding parking spaces, 22 enclosed parking spaces. So I think there are lots of this, questions about this project that I need answered before I'm ready to go one way or the other on it. And I think we need to as well make sure that the public is very much aware, not only the project in general, but the specific changes that will be made to City Hall, including an entirely new council chamber. So while I strongly support making safety improvements that are essential, I need to know some cost estimates of one option versus the other. Thank you.
Okay, other comments. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I'd just like to request that the city budget show up on the website, please. And if there's a final budget book, if we could have that, I guess I can see it on the website. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions? Ms. Hardy?
Maybe at our next work session, can we get an update on the timeline for the traffic calming based on the concerns we heard from the Winter Hill residents?
All right, other comments, questions, requests? All right, let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. What I plan to report on tonight is, is a update for the council and for the community on the milestones and the timeline, next steps for the campus project. I've got about nine slides on that. We've already started some of the public comment on matters of the agenda tonight, so let me just ask the council, would you prefer to have that city manager's report right now or to defer that to a later part of the agenda?
What do folks want to do? All right, I guess we got two nows, three nows, four nows, so I think we're now. If you can, just give us the, you know, expedited version.
So what I would like to walk through tonight is the work that we have been doing and planning for the, for the campus project over the past years, really, but really the intense planning and the roadmap, which was presented to the City Council in September. I'll just hit some of the key dates for that. What's on the wall right now, just so everybody's oriented, was the conceptual development plan that came out of the school's feasibility study. Some of the details of this obviously are going to change as the schools go through its design process and as we go through air marketing process with the private sector, but this is the conceptual plan that will help guide that, the thinking and the discussions going ahead. So the referendum was approved by the voters last week, so here are the key scheduling blocks that people should be aware of. And these all have lots of opportunities for public input, and this will be a community process. But essentially, over the next 16 months, that will be the critical design period for the high school. And at the same time that the high school is being designed, we'll be using that same 16-month block of time to market the property and negotiate a development agreement for the approximately 10 acres that will help pay for the school. We're all working towards a May 2019 timeframe, at which point we're planning to have the school board act to approve the construction contract for the high school, and the city council would approve a development agreement for the approximately 10 acres. Those would happen before the issuance of the construction bonds targeted for the June 2019 timeframe. So July 2019, we start a two-year construction process for the high school from the summer 2019 through the summer of 2021, with this new school opening for the school year in the fall of 2021. And then after that period of time, then the 10 acres becomes available for the commercial development, and that, that construction would start. So with those big blocks in mind, this chart is a little bit small. This is, our Gantt charts on this are extremely detailed, but this is a very simplified version of what I just described in terms of the big blocks. And I won't go through that again, just, you know, the dates that I provided earlier. So a little bit more detail, what we expect will come fairly soon, is the, the school procurement process will start towards the end of November with the school board issuing the request for conceptual proposals for the design and construction of the high school. So that's the first step in their procurement process. That would then be followed by a formal RFP for, for the design-build contract for the school. The city council will be considering comp plan and zoning for the site in the November through the March timeframe. In March 2018, the city would issue its RFQ, a request for qualifications for the commercial development process. In May 2018, that's the targeted timeframe where the school board would pick their design-build firm, and that will be a team of architects and, and construction for the high school. So next spring, May 2018 is the target for that. And June 2018 is when the city would follow up on its RFQ and issue an RFP for the commercial development process. So both the schools and the city government will have a two-step procurement process, first starting with hopefully a broad net of a lot of response at the conceptual level, then shortlisting for more detailed proposals and more in-depth review of the proposals that come to us. Other key milestones, October 2018, the commercial development process, we would select the top-ranked respondent. In November 2018 through May 2019, that's the period when, when we'd finalize the development agreement and conceptual development plan. In April 2019, that's when you'd finalize, the school board would finalize the school plans and the guaranteed maximum price for that contract, and May 2019 authorize the construction bonds for the high school. So everything, again, coming to a head about 16 months from now. Again, a two-year construction process for the high school. While that, while the high school is being constructed, we'd have the site plan and building permit process for the commercial development. Summer 2021, the high school opens, and fall 2021, the commercial development begins. So again, that's, that's a quick summary. We are engaged right now with discussions with our neighbors so that they are part of our planning process, and they have been over the past several years, UVA and Virginia Tech and Womata, as well as our private neighbors, Federal Realty, and others to the, to the south as well. So I'll stop there, and if there are any questions on that schedule, I just wanted to provide that sort of broad overlook of, of next steps that have been laid out. The voters have given us marching orders for this project. We know that the community will be participating and watching this project very closely, and that's built into our process for all the next steps. And we also all know that we'll be graded on, on how we meet those milestones and how we deliver on the, on the plans that we've developed up, up to this point. Any questions?
Thanks for that process or review. Would you be coming to us at our next meeting, maybe with a governance structure discussion, committees and, you know, overlapping and coordinating responsibilities between the schools and the city?
That's right. The, the Economic Working Group at its last meeting discussed governance structure. At your work session on the 20th, we plan to discuss that with the city council, as well as some of the comprehensive plan and future land use designations for the campus.
Other questions? So the, on the, the schools are issuing an RFQ. Will we be seeing that either separately or have a presentation about that prior to its issuance?
Yes, sir, that's planned currently for November 27th.
All right, other questions? If not, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Shields, I just want to make sure that because this is such a complex project and requires such coordination between the city government and the school staff, as well as school board and city council, that there is a very clear communications plan where the city and the schools are working closely together so that people can understand, and we're memorializing what we're doing from now forward, so that there is no confusion in the public about what actually is happening, when meetings are taking place.
All right, unless there's any other questions, why don't you come around the, back to, back to the table, and is that the entirety of your report or do you have more?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there anything else anyone wants to ask Mr. Shields, or should we go ahead on with the first item on the agenda? All right, let's, let's keep on moving then. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the first item, please?
Yes, sir. We have TO 17-15, Ordinance to amend ordinances 1970 and 1975 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2018 for the General Fund and Capital Improvements Program funds.
All right, before we get started, I have a quick disclosure to read. I have consulted with the city attorney, and although no declaration is strictly required, I want to make the following declaration before city council's consideration of the proposed budget amendments in item 10A1. My wife is employed by the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the 2018 budget. However, I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly?
I've consulted with the city attorney, and although no declaration is strictly required, I want to make the following declaration before city council's consideration of proposed budget amendments in item 10A1 on tonight's agenda. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons that may be affected by the FY 2018 budget. I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right, Ms. Bawa?
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. This is the second reading of the amendment of the ordinance to amend the budget. The first reading was granted on October 23rd. With that, if you have any questions.
I'm sorry, is that, are you done with the presentation?
I'm done. This is the second reading, and the first reading was granted on October 23rd, so.
I want to use that as an instruction to our next presenter and remaining presenters that.
I'm just leaving enough time for your next item.
It is possible to have a very short presentation and still be quite effective. Are there any questions or comments? I'm going to ask, is any member of the public wish to speak to this matter, seeing none of the matter is closed to the public? Again, are there any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly, yes?
Ms. Bawa, I just want to confirm, nothing has changed since the first reading?
That's correct, nothing has.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, these are all grant-funded expenditures, is that right?
Yes, either grants or donations, and they're for specific projects or causes, has no net impact on the general fund balance.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Z?
Mayor moved to adopt TO 17-15.
We have a second.
Second.
Ms. Oliver on the second, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder? Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
All right. Will you call the next item, please?
Yes, we have three related items. Would you like me to call all three of those?
I'll defer to the city attorney. Can we call these items and hear these items contemporaneously?
Yes, you can. At the end, you'll need to just do three motions.
Of course. All righty.
Thank you.
We have TR 17-17, Resolution to amend the comprehensive plan of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, to change the designation of approximately 2.68 acres of land located at 100 North Washington Street and 127 and 131 East Broad Street. Real property code numbers 53-104-051, 53-104-036, and 53-104-050, from business and transitional to mixed use on the city's future land use map on application by Broad and Washington LLC. We have TO 17-09, An Ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of the city of Falls Church, Virginia by rezoning a total of approximately .90 acres of land at 131 East Broad Street. Real property code number 53-104-050, from T1 Transitional District to B2 Central Business District on application by Broad and Washington LLC. And then we have TR 17-18, Resolution to Grant a Special Exception for Residential Uses Within a Mixed Use Development Project, and to Increase the Building Height with a Bonus of 15 Feet to a Maximum Height of 90 Feet for a Mixed Use Development Project on Approximately 2.68 Acres of Land Located at 100 North Washington Street and 127 and 131 East Broad Street. Real Property Code Numbers 53-104-051, 53-104-036, and 53-104-050, on application by Broad and Washington LLC.
All right. Thank you very much. And who are we going to hear from first, Mr. Shields?
We're going to hear from me, just very briefly, but I'm looking for Ms. Akita Ruzi. Oh, there she is. Okay. And Gary Fuller. So what we'd like to do tonight, council, is start with a staff report, which would be led by Akita Ruzi, who is our principal planner for this project. She's joined by Gary Fuller, who can speak to the project as well, but Ms. Ruzi will give the presentation. Then that would be followed by a presentation by the developer, questions by the city council, a public hearing, and then council comments, and then consideration. What the request tonight is to refer this to boards and commissions for their comments and recommendations, and then it would come back to the city council at a work session so that she can review all those comments before final consideration. The staff recommendation is for recommendation out to boards and commissions, and Ms. Ruzi will provide the rationale for that recommendation. But in broad terms, the council did consider this over the summer months, and at that time, the request was to allow us a little bit additional time to work with the developer before first reading. And the purpose of that was, if there were going to be structural changes to the massing and other sort of large issues for the project, it'd be better to take care of those before first reading. There have been substantial changes to the way the building, massing, and how it interacts with Lawton, Lawton Street. And so that is one substantial change since it was considered over the summer. In addition, there's been greater clarity and specificity on the retail plan. That also was a principal concern, where we anticipated that there would be changes, and there have been changes. In addition, the unit count in the residential program has undergone changes as well, and we'll detail what those are. Our recommendation is to refer it out to boards and commissions with the thought that this project will evolve, will change, and will improve with the benefit of the comment and review by the public and by your boards and commissions. And so this project is not by any means complete. We've got significant work still to do, we believe, with the development team, but we think that the best way to do that would be through the process of the very public process with our boards and commissions. We do have our Insight development team here, and we look, we thank them for their work with us on this project. We do have a great deal of confidence in this development team in terms of our interaction with them to date, in terms of their responsiveness. So I'll now turn it over to Ms. Ruzi for the, for the staff report.
Good evening, council. I'm Akita Ruzi with Planning. I'd like to just briefly highlight aspects of the staff report that's before you tonight. Just as a quick overview of the project, the proposed Broad and Washington development project is a mixed-use building with the following elements: up to six stories of residential multifamily rental apartments with 295 units above ground-floor retail, a six-story office building above ground-floor retail at the corner of Broad and Washington, ground-floor retail along frontage of the project on Broad and Washington Streets, including a community theater space, one story above ground parking in addition to two underground levels of parking. The building height proposed varies from 65 feet to 90 feet along East Broad Street, 12 feet to 65 feet along Lawton Street, 72 feet to 90 feet along North Washington Street, and an average height of 75 feet generally along the north elevation. A fifth and the latest submission of the proposed project was received on October 13th. The rise materials are in attachment on one of the staff report before you. City staff has reviewed this latest submission, and comments are provided in Attachment 7. The project site is adjacent to a residential property to the immediate north, and massing compatibility has been an important part of discussions with the council and in the Lawton neighborhood. Staff has attended a number of meetings that the applicant held with the Lawton Street neighbors to discuss design strategies for the Lawton Street transition, and their current plans have made significant improvements to address those compatibility concerns. As proposed, we think the current massing and setbacks provided satisfies the special exceptions requirement for compatibility. I'd like to briefly highlight some of the key elements provided in their current plan that staff evaluated to reach that conclusion. A setback of 42 feet is provided along the northeastern property line adjacent to the R1A lot at 107 Lawton Street, where 20 feet is actually required. A designed and landscaped park is proposed along the northeastern property line adjacent to 107 Lawton Street. The proposed setback with along Lawton Street varies from 24 feet to 30 feet measured from face of curb. Additionally, various height reductions and setbacks are proposed along the northeastern elevation adjacent to the residential lot up north. The first step back occurs 42 feet in distance from the northeastern property line, and building height proposed there is approximately 12 feet. The second step back occurs 60 feet in distance from the northeastern property line, and building height proposed there is approximately 35 feet. The third step back occurs midpoint of Lawton Street elevation, and the building height proposed there is approximately 65 feet measured from the East Broad Street ground elevation. A second-story open courtyard previously proposed along East Broad Street is shifted to the north side to serve as a break in massing along the northeastern property line adjacent to that residential parcel. To summarize, the northeastern elevation adjacent to the residential parcel can be broken down to three building heights at 12 feet, 35 feet, and 65 feet. Additional Lawton Street commitments include through the voluntary concessions $20,000 for traffic calming on Lawton Street and $10,000 towards a permit parking program. Additionally, balconies are also prohibited for residential units facing Lawton Street and adjacent to the 107 Lawton Street properties through the voluntary concessions. During review of the fifth submission, several areas have been identified by staff to guide the applicant in further development and refinement of the proposed project. Those comments are again in Attachment 7 of the report. Some key staff issues include improved architecture and material selection on north elevation, commitment for additional storm water management, further development of TDM with city staff, additional crosswalks around the site for pedestrians' safety and site connectivity, median break on North Washington to improve vehicular access to the city lot, and additional intersection enhancements at Broad and Washington. Again, this is not an all-inclusive list, but the details are in Attachment 7. And that really concludes the staff report, so I'll turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the applicant. If you could try to focus your comments, remarks to the changes that have occurred since the last submission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I will gladly do that. And let me start by saying for the record, I am Greg Regal from McGuire Woods Law Firm, and I am very pleased and proud to represent the applicant. And I'll also say, I do not know that I will meet the standards for efficiency that your CFO set with the previous matter, but we'll, we'll do our best and try to be respectful. I did, and we're going to have a presentation here that's going to try to bring some of these changes to life more visually, but I did want to pause briefly on the path we've taken to get here, which has been a long one, and I think by any objective standard, a very thorough one, and I would even respectfully suggest an effective one, if you define effectiveness as the project having been through a reasonable evolution, and hopefully we've had effectiveness in the sense of good and productive engagement with the staff and the community. I also want to be clear that we've listened very careful to the council, and we have tried to respond very directly to the comments you made when we were last in this room in the summer months, and I think fairly stated those comments centered on taking a very close and precise look at those transition issues on Lawton, strengthening the retail program in terms of its certainty, and in the process, strengthening the fiscal impacts of the project. And we've got significant responses in all those areas. I also want to be very clear relative to the action you're taking tonight, and state from the applicant's perspective, a very clear understanding that we understand that this is a part of the process and not a conclusion of the process, and you have our commitment that the spirit of collaboration and problem-solving that has gotten us to this point will continue through the remainder of that process. To that same end, we want to be very clear on the record that everyone on this team, and particularly the principals at Insight, are very cognizant of only making the commitments we can confidently stand behind, and everything you see in these plans and in these voluntary concessions meets that test. So with that said, let's go to the video and click it to the left or the right to move it. Let's start with just a brief review of kind of where we've been on this project. You see references to true mixed use. You see a numerical reference to, to my knowledge, what is the largest commitment for office space in the city of Falls Church that's come through this process recently. A significant commitment to ground-floor uses, I'll talk more about the nature of those ground-floor uses, and the residential program largely as, as it's existed. We've tried to embrace the arts and entertainment concept by committing to the Creative Cauldron Theater. I also did want to note for the record that our commitment to theater space in the voluntary concessions is exclusive to Creative Cauldron. There was some question as to whether that needed to be stated more directly, and we'll certainly make sure that that is unambiguous. They've been our partners from the beginning and a very good partner, and they're an integral part of the activation and the embracement of the arts and entertainment concept. We've given you a very firm commitment to restaurant uses, almost 14,000 square feet, and you were clear in prior discussions about wanting meaningful public amenities, and we'll show you those, or remind you of those commitments in terms of the rooftop plaza and a public pocket park that's evolved further as we've gone through the exercise collectively. So what have we changed, and what have we done? This is the summary of how Insight essentially spent its summer. It's enumerated there for you on the right-hand side. Outreach is a huge component of that. You've heard about the enhancements to the facade and Lawton Street, and certainly significant fiscal enhancements. We've dropped the three-bedroom units from the development program and strengthened the retail program in a lot of ways. We've now literally defined all of the retail space in terms of the types of uses you wanted. There is a commitment in there to pursue grocery. There is a commitment to commit to the restaurants I've defined, and we have, I think, a very tight list of prohibited uses that ought to go a long way in terms of making sure that that retail program is what we frankly all want, in terms of activated and fiscally very strong. This brings that retail program to life in many respects, and I would particularly call your attention to those sort of reddish lines at the bottom that illustrate the continuous nature of the retail program. It shows you the anchor of Creative Cauldron at one end, the anchor of a fine dining establishment at the other, and again, it's continuous, it's activated, and it's activated with the uses that I think you and we collectively want to see. This is a reminder of what we've accomplished in prior discussions with those public spaces. This is a look at that upper plaza, something that we've worked very hard at, and I think something that's been very well received in terms of its size and its potential for amenity. You also get a recurring look at some of the, again, the recurring themes of this project in terms of street trees, activated sidewalks, wide sidewalks, and the type of amenities I've been talking about. Another look at the rooftop courtyard, this time from the north side of, or the Park Place side. You also see a teaser for potential, another way to activate the site in terms of an outdoor movie screen. Again, trading very positively, we hope and think, on that arts and entertainment theme that we have tried to embrace from the beginning. This was something we showed you previously, again, I think that was well-received. This was part of that process of getting people up to the plaza. We have a commitment to work with the city staff in terms of defining exactly the hours of operation and how this plaza will be work, will work, but certainly the team's commitment is to make this a true public space, make it available for programming, make it an amenity to the community, and the inclusion of the stairway was a significant step in terms of making that happen. Wanted to talk a little bit, start a conversation about what we refer to as the pocket park. I would call your attention to that area, open space area on the upper right, touching Lawton Street. That does a number of things. It provides connectivity. It also is really part of a multifaceted strategy to try to mitigate impacts on that side of the property. And you heard a lot from the staff about tapering and stepping down and adjusting the physical mass. We've also tried to address those impacts at grade level in terms of a very pleasing, well-landscaped amenity that translates just as well at grade, and hopefully all these things work together to create the kind of transition that is proper and appropriate and that you, the council, and the community want to see. Try to bring that to life a little bit. You see, if nothing more, size and scale and usability of this space. This is not just a token piece of open space, it's a functional and very well-amenitized space. It helps with the transition, and the combination of landscaping and open space along with the architectural changes, again, we think and hope it works all together. You also see the opportunity for connectivity and making sure that this project is an integrated part of the community, and lots of good ideas in terms of how we can make it a great space. I don't know what that is. If I X this out, will I do something bad? Oh, okay. Thank you. It's about the limits of my technological abilities. I've talked a couple times about amenitized sidewalks. This is a look down Broad Street. Again, you see that continual retail front, and you see the opportunities for things like bike stations, paved sidewalks, great street trees. We've committed to large trees, native trees, and again, this will be a great space when all is said and done. This is taking you down to Creative Cauldron, essentially. Talk a little bit about the northern facade. We've done a number of things here to, again, respond to your comments, working on the design, the architecture, and the materials. If you look at the left-hand portion of the drawing where the multifamily building is, you'll see a couple of things. We have brought the building, the brick around the building on each end, sort of toward the F in the Falls Church moniker and toward the H, so you have additional brick, and the amount of windows have gone up considerably compared to earlier iterations of this thing. And we hope we've moved toward now an articulated facade that has continuity as you circle the building, has architectural interest, has variation in color and texture, and is, again, hopefully reflective of the good design guidance that you've given us. Taking that to the ground level, we've also increased the brick down where the pedestrians and, and people coming in and out of the site will interact most directly. Those bottom two levels are now committed to be in brick, the same brick that wraps the other portions of the building. So we've, we've brought it around the corner, and we've addressed that sort of ground plane as well. You also see some of the earlier commitments we've made in terms of amplifying the landscaping and the functionality of some of the parking and so forth on the city lot, and those are commitments we still stand behind. Lawton Street, where a lot of the action has been. We've summarized it on the right-hand side of this drawing. You've gotten a pretty thorough summary from staff as well, and really, the Lawton Street story needs to start with a sincere thank you to the community members that have engaged with us. Folks have spent a lot of time on this, and candidly, we haven't always agreed, but everybody really deserves credit in the community for being professional, being constructive, and a lot... a lot of what we, where we arrived tonight, candidly, was driven by suggestions by the community, suggestions we were very happy to embrace. So we've talked about outreach. I won't cover that further. You've gotten a good look at the redesign, significant reorientation of bulk and mass, significant stepping down. I'd urge you to think about it in the context of the landscaping and the park commitments I've talked about, and we've restated on the right-hand side some of the other commitments we've made collectively on Lawton, ranging from traffic calming to absence of certain forms of outdoor activities, no balconies, and potentially a permit parking system as well to the benefit of the residents. Lot going on in this drawing, but it's all good stuff. I guess in the simplest form, this shows you how we've basically pulled in from the property lines and stepped down. The pullback is illustrated on the left in terms of where we were when this process started in 2015 and how we've evolved, and then if you pay attention to the right-hand side, you see where we were as recently as the last time we were in this room presenting in the upper slide versus the step down that's now reflected on the lower right-hand side. As staff alluded to, you start with a building height of a very modest 10 to 12 feet and progressively step up from there. You also see the relationship between the landscaping and the park, and that building elevation and architecture, and we think and hope it's been a very successful outcome, owed in large part to a lot of help and constructive thought from the community. This shows another version of it, where we started in 2015, where we are, with the where we are being in the yellow, the blue being an intermediate step, and if nothing more, it's a significant evolution and reflective of your process really working, I think, as you hope intended to. If you've given me a look at the sidewalk along Lawton, I think the takeaway here are two things. We've got space to provide a very attractive and functional pedestrian amenity. I'd also call your attention to the fact we are, we believe we were able to save all the existing trees on Lawton, something that was important to the staff and I think important to the community, and that's part of that good transition on Lawton, accomplishing it with both the architecture and other ways. Couple quick things, you've seen these previously. We just wanted to remind you of the effort that went into opening the parking, making it permeable, making it functional, making it attractive, and something that will be inviting to folks. I've highlighted the removal of three-bedroom units, and again, these concepts are unchanged, but do reflect progress in the process from prior discussions. And with that, I and the members of the collective Insight team are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Why don't we, we do have public comment, we'll get to that in just a moment, but why don't we just start with just pure questions, either of staff or the applicant? Do we have any questions for either of those two? Ms. Hardy?
I always get to start. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I appreciate the walkthrough and all the work that you've done over the summer. Does someone have the unit mix and number chart before and after? I know that the number has slightly gone up, and we've removed the three-bedroom units, but I believe they've been replaced with an increase of two bedrooms. Could someone just run through the list of studios, one bedroom, two bedrooms for me? Or if they have a slide, that would be great, too.
I don't know that we have a chart with this, but we did, we added a total of, I think, six units, and you're right, some of them, it was a combination of studios, one bedrooms, and two bedrooms that replaced the previous three bedrooms.
Do you have any two bedrooms and dens?
We do have, we have the same number of two bedrooms and dens we had in the previous submission. So we eliminated the three bedrooms, kept the two bedroom dens, replaced the three bedrooms with studios, one bedrooms, and two bedrooms.
Okay.
How many, is it 15 two-bedroom and dens, if recollection serves correct? 15? Okay.
Can I keep going?
Of course.
I have some transportation and connectivity issues. Like you mentioned, this is kind of a really important corner for us, so I think making sure that the connectivity between Broad and Lawton and Broad and Park Place are important. I think during the walking tour that we did a couple weeks ago, we talked about the idea of a mid-block intersection or crossing from the Falls Church Episcopal across the street. Is that part of the plan, and if so, where are we with that?
I guess, let me start by saying, I think we have an aligned interest in terms of those objectives, and it is something that, you're correct, was raised, the walkthrough, we're still looking at it and haven't ruled out, but are just trying to make the pieces fit together. But we've made some other commitments to crosswalks, and we think that the pedestrian access is huge to the success of the project, and it's something we're delighted to continue exploring.
Because I think the next traffic light would be all the way to Cherry.
Right.
And so that's quite a long block, I think, and we're thinking about access from the south side of town. I think it'd be great to think about something other than just that intersection.
Have an absolute aligned interest in getting those people moved that way.
Great. And likewise, a similar question on North Washington. So going southbound currently, you can't turn left onto Park Place into the city lot, and so I think we've talked about doing a median cut there so that a left turn can be made. Is that part of the plan, or so is that still underway?
That's also still being evaluated, and frankly, we want to get it right, and it does require some coordination with your staff and others involved in road and highway planning, but...
Yeah. I think our intention there is not to orphan that city lot, otherwise there'd be no way really in unless you do some sort of U-turn around.
I think we agree.
Great.
Before you move on to the other questions, if it were the will of council or the staff, would you then be willing to provide the crosswalk we discussed and also the curb cut, if that is the desire of council?
Again, I think we have that aligned interest in doing it, presuming we can do it practically and so forth, and I think it's something we'd absolutely consider, and we can get back to you as soon as possible with answers to that. We're literally working on it, I think, as we speak, as Maury's nodding his head. So it goes back to what I say about, what I said earlier about just wanting to make sure we can do what we say, and we took those comments seriously and cut the engineering team loose, and are trying to get good answers, so.
Why don't you let us know as soon as you can, then, with a response to that? Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. Going to the public plaza, the raised one, are there going to be limited access in hours? I'm glad that we've added kind of stairway access, but is it only going to be open to the public at certain times, and if so, what those might be?
We've given you a voluntary concession that obligates us to work in coordination with the city and the city manager to develop a reasonable program. We certainly envision it to be public, but in the same context, your own public parks, for instance, do operate within prescribed hours, and we just need to have some reasonable operational and management control, but the expectation is that it is a public place.
And likewise, for the public parking, which I'm glad that we've, you decided to open up your parking lot for public use. I think you mentioned that it'd be kind of a nominal fee, but I also read in the VCs that there'd be limited hours for that. What's your thinking on that?
The VCs take a similar approach to that issue in terms of working in coordination, again, with the city and principally your city manager to develop a program that works for you and for us, and I think that part of the reason there is we think flexibility benefits both sides, that until we're operational, we won't be able to necessarily forecast everything with complete precision, but you'll have a voice in that and a say in that, and I guess the commitment, much like the plaza, is that there be a public component. We certainly don't have any reason to want to exclude people, and it kind of trades even on some of the comments you got from one of the speakers, and we think the existing businesses can benefit from that, and there will undoubtedly be times when demand varies. So we're hopefully your partner in terms of trying to make that all work and work right.
Moving on to my questions about the retail plans, I'm glad to see that we have a little more specificity, especially the list of prohibited uses and more commitments. Can you walk me through how it would work? I know that we have specific square footage outlined for restaurant space, a grocer, a small grocer, and then kind of a wine and food use. How would it work if you can't find, fill up those uses?
Well, I would add Creative Cauldron to that sort of mandatory list, too, and the only one that there's a little flexibility on is that 6,000 square feet of food use, and we've got an obligation to pursue it, we've got an obligation to explain to you why it didn't happen, if it didn't happen. There's still a floor in there for that type of use, a little lower than the 6,000, so you've got a fairly small number that is not decisively locked down. The restaurant number is a firm number. The other numbers that you referred to in the voluntary concessions are firm numbers. So relative to where we were, there is, I would respectfully suggest, precious little play, and you take that with, combined to what we've now excluded, which was really the types of things reflective of your walking tour that you've told us you'd prefer not to have there. I should add, too, that we make those prohibitions with the confidence in the site as being a first-class retail opportunity. We think it's arguably the best corner in the city. We think it capitalizes on the existing restaurant and entertainment uses, and again, a very high confidence that we've got an aligned interest and we will be able to deliver what we say.
So going back to the reserved uses, are those indefinite commitments? So for example, if the 13,000 square feet for restaurant uses, if that restaurant goes out of business, the next thing that comes in has to be a restaurant again, and so it can't be switched to something else. And likewise, for the grocer, Creative Cauldron, I think, was exclusive?
Yep.
And if those things don't happen within a certain amount of time, have you all given thought any sort of penalty or incentive for the city?
Well, if we don't, we can't meet the requirement, but we're standing back here and talking about having to amend the approval, which is not a place we want to be, and again, we have a high degree of confidence that we're going to be able to deliver those uses, or we wouldn't have put them in there in the way we've done. And we've learned a lot about the retail market since we've been in this process and owned this property for now three years or more, and there's a good story to be told there.
So moving on to some green issues, sorry to seal your thunder, Mr. Z. One of the recommendations we've heard from the Tree Commission recently is they would like us to have 15% green space in all of our mixed-use projects. Do you know what percentage of your project is green?
I don't know if we have it at our fingertips, but I would be surprised if we are not at 15%, but we can either confirm it or get it back to you.
And I know in the past you've talked about projects that you've had done that were lead gold, and I think we have that aspiration. What would it take to get this project to be lead gold?
Well, we're at lead silver now. It would, and it would...
Shoot high.
And look, there's always a balance between the processing costs and so forth of those programs relative to the outcome. You've heard us say a lot of different ways that this developer has a commitment to those sorts of programs. We have a track record of a commitment to those sorts of programs. Certainly, if we were to accomplish the solar and some of the other things, we would probably be to that level, but we're trying to be true to what I've said in a couple of occasions of only saying what we know we can do, and that's what we're comfortable we can deliver at this point. We can continue to look at it as we go forward.
Do you have that number on the percent for green? Okay. Thank you. That's it for now.
Ms. Oliver?
So I just have a question for you on the construction management, on the construction parking plan and the traffic and staging plan is going to come along in the future. That's 17-1. And I guess I was just curious, the period of time that you expect that plan to cover during this project?
The construction timeframe?
About two years.
So it's a two-year construction period?
So is, when you say that you will not have an adverse impact on traffic safety, are we also planning to make sure that we do not have an adverse effect on bus access? Because there's a very critical bus stop at that corner, and pedestrian access, because as we discussed previously, there is no pedestrian crossing along Broad Street for quite some ways, and I know during construction projects that at times you have to close the sidewalk for safety reasons, but I want to make sure that that voluntary concession, you're very clear that you will put in writing what your plans are for the bus and pedestrian access. I think that would be a very important thing that I would want to make sure we capture.
To the extent that's not clear, we can make that clear. The goal, I think, is exactly what your intention is, is to not be disruptive, and I'm actually glad you brought up those commitments, both in terms of the practical parking and staging and the collective liaison sort of function in case there's just anything that was unanticipated and really, you know, sort of trades positively on that outreach and sort of cooperation I've discussed. So we can look at that with more precision relative to your specific comments, though.
Okay. I think that would be helpful. And then my other question is for staff. I wanted to double-check about the website for this project. The website, do we have a dedicated page for this project right now? Can you pull it up? Just, would that be possible? And I guess my specific question is about the timeline and the schedules for the boards and commissions meetings. Is that very clear on this website? I know within the package that we received tonight, we have some information about the general outlines. I think that the boards and commission schedule, as shown on this staff report, is a little bit tight. Boards and commissions meeting in December and January, that's a tough window there.
It is a draft schedule at this time, and it's not on the website, actually. We can look into the schedule to make sure it's, that we have enough time built into it.
I think having enough time built into it, and I also want to make it clear, for people who go to look at this project, if they're interested in hearing the presentations at the boards and commissions, or would like to go to boards and commissions and make comments, it needs to be very clear when they can be there, and that needs to be very well-publicized. I don't want us to get into a situation where this is coming back to council and people are saying, but I didn't have a chance to provide feedback, and so I think it's important. I'm, you know, I'm glad that the project is up there, but I think that we should look very carefully at how we put that schedule up, and that we take a very close look at that schedule, because December and January are just not the best meeting months.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. Who's next? Mr. Snyder?
Here's a question for the city. First of all, several years ago, we went through a small area planning process where we laid out different opportunity areas, and we designated certain uses for certain parts of that area. So could you comment on what the designated use was for this site?
I'll ask our planning staff to speak to that.
So the small area plan designates, so the concept plan and the small area plan shows this area as the redevelopment potential. The portion of the site developed with the Robertson, Appleby buildings is included in the core entertainment area, which is a focused area of dense retail businesses with supporting residential and hotel space, and so that's the envisioned use for that site.
So the envisioned use, again, was not commercial. I thought one of the plans that I saw was designated as commercial.
It is commercial. It is commercial. Well, for the comp plan, the future land use map in the comp plan designates that area as business. For the first two lots, that's closest to the intersection, and then the third lot, that's one, that's the Lawton and East Broad lot, that one's transitional, and that's the comp plan designation. For downtown area, this area is actually in the core entertainment area, but the envisioned use is commercial.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. So to the developer, and please understand it's my job to ask questions that go to the heart of the project. So let me go onto a couple of those. First of all, in listening to people, the sense is, we have enough apartments in the city, but we could use condos, so why aren't you proposing condos for all or part of the residential? Or will you consider that?
Let me go back to what I've said a couple ways, a couple times. We're not in the business of saying anything but what we can do, and I'm going to resist the temptation to say we'll look at that because maybe it feels good and it's a way to artfully sort of diffuse your question. The reality is that we think that there is not an oversupply of multifamily, particularly multifamily of the type and amenity that's been designed here, and to answer your question equally directly, that's just not the business that this applicant is in, and I think we owe it to you to be transparent about that, the same way we're trying to be transparent about everything else we've talked about.
Thank you. So the next question is, do you have legally enforceable contracts to occupy any of the ground floor and the office building, other than the floors that you plan to use at this point?
We do have, I want to get it right, on the office, we have letters of intent level? No, not yet. We have expressed interest. Yes.
We have expressed interest.
Yes. But I would, you know, to maybe elaborate on that, we're making probably the biggest bet that's been made in a long time on office space in the city. We wouldn't be doing it if we weren't confident. I'd also remind you that we've made the commitment that in previous times at this podium, that we will deliver that office concurrent with the residential, so you're not going to have a residential project there without the commercial amenities. It's one phase, it all goes in together, and to Ms. Hardy's very thorough questions, I think you've got a very legitimate... I think you've got a very legitimate set of retail restrictions that accomplish the certainty you want, even if we don't have those signed leases today. And if anything, you may have gotten lessons in retail leasing a lot of different ways. And those folks will not sign up until this project is approved and, in many cases, even under construction, but...
The next question I had was, you've heard a small business make some comments tonight, no request. What's your response to what our small business asked for tonight?
I think we think those small businesses are a strength of the project. We want them to succeed, they can help us succeed. So, and it was the reason I was sort of highlighting what Ms. Oliver said about some of the voluntary concessions that are in place with respect to coordination during construction, with respect to communication during construction. So we have, we think, an aligned interest and a program to try to manage those impacts so folks are not harmed. And we think it's the responsible thing to do and we think it's the right thing to do.
The next question is, what square footage have you committed to Creative Cauldron?
5,000 square feet.
And are those 5,000 square feet included in the, what is designated as commercial?
They are. And, you know, I, again, respectfully would suggest that, take the comments that staff gave you with respect to your comprehensive plan question and think about the arts and entertainment sort of notion here. The Creative Cauldron use is a substantial part of that story and a great part of that story. And we have every confidence that's going to drive, it's going to make the restaurants more successful, it's going to drive that retail program that we know you're interested in and concerned about.
So, and then finally, we've seen some revenue projections. This is both a request to the city and to the developer. They, I think they call for two or three cents net-net revenue in this area. So my question is, are those figures predicated on a occupancy, a tax-paying, existing occupancy of all the commercial square footage?
I could speak to the city's fiscal impact analysis, and that is, it's, the projection is for the project stabilized and occupied.
I don't disagree. You know, I think the other comment I would make on the fiscal is the spread has narrowed and the numbers are up relative to what we've discussed in this room previously. And that's a result of the voluntary concessions, the retail commitments, and the elimination of the three bedroom units, among other things. We still think the numbers are conservative. And if you have a need for additional data perspective, we'd be glad to give it. But we've, I think, at your direction, worked with the city and tried to give you a one consistent set.
But you don't disagree with the key point that that assumes 100% occupancy?
Yeah. Yeah, whether it's 100 or 95, but yeah. Stabilized is probably the operative word.
And just very quickly, are you continuing to meet with the Lawton Street neighbors?
We've had a continual dialogue, a good dialogue. Everything I said earlier, it's been respectful, it's been constructive. And our ears and doors and what have you are open anytime they want to talk. And I don't profess to say we've resolved everything, but I think objectively, we've made a lot of progress. And again, what I've said about their conduct and their approach is really a large part of it.
Those are the questions I had right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going down the road, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Ruzzi. I think the first thing I want to ask is, we're two years now into this discussion, I believe, from the staff report. We started in October of 2015. And I'm trying to compare this application to the other, you know, two most recent significant buildings that we've put up, the West Broad Harris Teeter and the Lincoln Tenner Hill. And it's my recollection that when we were that deep into the discussion of those buildings, we already had a pretty concrete idea of what the main retail attraction was going to be. It was going to be Harris Teeter for the Rushmark West Broad building, and it was going to be Fresh Market or a National Credit Tenant, turns out to be Target. But, you know, we were designing a space that was aimed at that kind of user. And my recollection is that being able to describe those buildings with those as the primary anchor was helpful to members of council and helpful to the community. Your representations about, you know, the ground floor usage of this proposed building are, you know, very firm. You've used language that suggests you're quite certain that, you know, you're going to do some great magic here. But I'm wondering, at what point in our deliberations do you expect that you would be able to put a name to that fine dining restaurant and put a, at least an expressed interest, commitment to the grocery use? Do you have any thoughts about when that might come?
Well, and I think that the projects are all different. And the nature and the type of retail here is different than the other projects. I'm very familiar with the Harris Teeter project, as you know, and that was one user that was the driver. I'd respectfully suggest, in many respects, the driver here is arguably the office in terms of the commercial. And you've heard me talk about the commitment to deliver it, to deliver it concurrently. That is about as unambiguous as you can be. But in terms of breaking down the retail program, the Creative Cauldron is a given. And to several of your collective questions, the nearly 14,000 square feet of eating establishments is also a commitment. Or we are literally standing back here amending those voluntary concessions, which I can assure you is not a place we want to be. In terms of what the users are, it's obviously not one user that takes 14,000 square foot of restaurant space. And frankly, you know, we have interest. I'm hesitant to release names or potential tenants because the negotiations are still at a sensitive place and we could push it the wrong way. It's possible we'll have more detail on that before we get to the potential finish line on whatever schedule is adjusted. But it is a different type of space, it is a different type of user than the single-user, large-format grocer that you referred to. But I'd urge you to think about the certainty with the office as an equal driver in terms of making sure that your revenues are balanced and you're getting the mixed-use development you hope.
So would you all be willing to connect the COs for the office use and the retail use to some, and the residential use to some more definitive language or action on the ground floor retail?
Again, you're getting the commitment that the office building will be built, and there's no incentive to build it and not lease it, shall we say.
So that's a verbal commitment from you all to open the office concurrent with the residential?
If the question is opening the, building and opening the office concurrently is, I think, something we can do. And let me say this, I think we understand the thirst for certainty. I've been on the walks that we've conducted out in the community, and I've heard the frustration with the way some of the retail's evolved. We've tried hard to address it. Don't misconstrue anything I'm saying to mean we don't understand the concern. And we'd like nothing better than to be able to give you that certainty. I just can't commit to that unequivocally, standing here tonight. And I don't want it to take away from what we think is the overall progress. And I respectfully think you've got us boxed in on the retail as you would want and hope. If you look at what's out and what has to be in, there's just not a lot of play there. So we're...
Well, I mean, yeah, I certainly acknowledge that progress has been made. You know, I'm sure you understand our position of needing to secure the public's position as firmly as we can, not only for, you know, reasons to do with finances, but just for optics. And also, there's an element of, as you said, this corner is probably the premier corner in the city. And, you know, 50 years from now, people will say, "Well, where is that false church place?" And people will say, "Well, it's there at the corner of Broad and Washington, where the blank is." And what is the blank? Well, you know, that blank will hopefully have been filled in. But there's a marketing opportunity that helps us, you know, sell the city better the sooner that, you know, we can nail down what it is that is there. Anyway, we don't need to discuss that further. I mean, I've got a fairly firm mind on it. I understand what your mind is, too. Let me just go on to a couple of other things. The Cauldron use, let's just say that, thanks to your generosity, Cauldron moves to this new location and just booms. And before you know it, they've got, you know, things going on, you know, six or seven days a week, and they need 300 seats. And they have to move to a bigger facility. What is then the successor use to the space that is now dedicated to the Cauldron?
Well, first of all, that would be a wonderful problem for everybody to have.
I agree, I like those kind of problems.
And we would love to even try to figure out a way to accommodate that problem somewhere in the project. Play all those hypotheticals out. We're still left with the restricted uses and the prohibited uses and all that stuff. So, and if you want us to address that potential more directly, I think that is something we can do in terms of however remote that may be.
Well, you know, I think it goes to, I think, what Ms. Hardy was asking to some degree, which, I mean, the other alternative is a possibility, too. I mean, as my understanding, I don't know the details, maybe the Cauldron folks can tell us. But there's going to be some gap in between, you know, you're finishing their space and them, you know, paying the rent where they are now. And they may need some bridge funding that's got to come from somewhere. You know, again, let's say that for some reason that Cauldron use doesn't occur as you have planned. You know, what does the language of the VCs say to the use of that space? You know, can it be used for some other cultural use? Can it be a, you know, City of Interest Center, Heritage Site? You name it. Or is it going to be, you know, another, say, you know, service retail use or non-service retail?
Yeah, I mean, the answer under the VCs that are before you now is any non-prohibited use. But again, I think that is something we can look at with more specificity, given your comments.
Okay, well, that's...
I'll also, let me also say, though, too, the council had asked about the certainty of the Cauldron use in the past. And that is one I'm much more comfortable talking about. And since we were last here, those discussions have evolved into actual lease negotiations, documents being traded back and forth. So I think we're making progress. And I've talked about aligned interests a lot of ways. That's the ultimate aligned interest. And that's one I would expect we will have done before we're here talking to you about...
So you're probably more familiar than most with, you know, their financial situation, where they are now and how long it's going to take them to get where you want to put them and what the delta is that you might help close. Because that's, I think, an interest that some of us have, that, you know, Cauldron has looked after during this time of transition for them. Let me ask a question about the unit mix. You know, up to now, again, with the two most recent buildings I cited, the market has seemed to want to build what it's built at West Broad and at Lincoln, which has turned out, fortunately, to be a very popular product. Public service costs are, you know, as we'd expected, are a little lower. How would you characterize this apartment product as compared to what's offered at West Broad and Lincoln in terms of, you know, the units that you're offering, the kind of people you expect to attract? Is it the same, different?
We think it's a little different, respectfully. And, look, there are no guarantees in that. We've got obligations to lease anybody who's qualified to walk through the door. But the way the product is positioned, and some of your staff, to their credit, have taken the time to go look at some of the inside product elsewhere in the market. We think we offer a little different type of staging, a little different type of amenity. In this case, it's even a little different lifestyle with the office building right next door, which we think does skew demographically different, probably skews a little demographically younger in some respects. If you look at the types of amenities and the programming and even things as simple as the interaction between the theater and the lobby and that being a continuous space. So I would respectfully suggest that it is positioned a little differently in the market. We've also talked about, we think that there is some move-down opportunity, which is where some of those larger units, larger, well-amenitized units could have some interest as well. So I think it's, you know, part of the reason I was confident answering, Mr. Snyder, is the earlier question about the rental market is because of the way this project is positioned relative to what you have. We're not ignorant to that. And certainly, it is not simply replicating. And all those projects are great projects, but they all have a little different place.
Okay, I have some other questions, particularly on fiscal impact, but I feel like I'm hogging the show. So, and I would like to hear from the public that is here. So I think I'll stop for now and hold some of my cards until a little later, thank you.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that this has taken a long time to get to this point in time. I want to thank you all for your patience. I think that, you know, there comes a point in time where the patience does wear a little thin. I'm looking at the sheet that was produced on July 17, 2017, and also embedded in the staff report. And I think you've been pretty clear about which of those things you're willing to do and which of those things you're not. So I truly detect that there's going to be very little movement here going forward on some of the things that are being asked. For example, can you convert all your apartments to condos? I think I've heard no now for the last 18 months. But let me just say this with regard to your prohibited uses. One of our fears, and the fears expressed here on council is that, you know, having done a world-class, Class A building, office building, a nicely proportioned development, that the ground floors will remain vacant. As if we haven't seen that before. I'm sure that you're even more frightened of that than we are because if it is vacant, then your good names will be, won't be good anymore. I mean, that's kind of basically what it is. I mean, your word will not be taken for what it is. You're trying to promise us things. As far as you can promise, well, actually saying, "Well, we'll give you a warrant that's precedent to a certificate of occupancy." We understand that. Let me also say that your prohibited uses do not include the things that I think you'll be afraid of. Facing Broad Street, I'm sure you're not going to want to see a yogurt, yoga, yogurt nail salon. And what's the last one? Oh, the world's best pizza. You are not going to fill those spaces with that. But it's not prohibited in your list. So it could very well come along. And you're going to say, "Well, you didn't ask us to remove that." Well, let this be the marker here that we don't want to see that. So let me also applaud you on the very high things you're doing with regard to environmental standards. And of course, I've been doing environmental for a long time now. So I think I know generally what things to ask for and what things you'll say no to. So I applaud your providing additional stormwater retention. That's great. I want you, Richard, back there to think about giving us a lead gold building for the office building. It's not going to cost you that much more. Not only that, but if you do the history, the research, as I'm sure you've done already, that your lease costs, your lease revenues for the leases on your office building will be substantially more because it is a higher-rated building. We have a lead gold building in the city, and it has very high rates of retention. People want to be there. And I can assure you the air quality with regard to productivity, well, I'm sure you know that as well as I do. So I would ask you to consider that, especially by the time we get to the second reading. Wednesday, I will be meeting with the Tree Commission. And they're going to say, "Do we have any movement on the voluntary concession for 20K for the tree program?" And I would like to hear that commitment or at least discussion of that tonight from you all. I do have a couple of questions with regard to the width of the sidewalks. Are they, from the building front to the curb, are they all uniformly 20 feet? I mean, they're 20 feet or better. They're not 19 feet, 10 and 1/2 inches. They're all at least 20 feet, right? Okay. So, what can you tell me about the lead gold and the tree replacement contribution?
Well, first of all, I mean, our patience has not run out. I'll start by saying that. It has been a long process, but I think if we weren't making progress, we'd maybe feel differently. On the lead gold, I can tell you it's going to be easier to deal with that in the office context, as you correctly stated. And it's written down on the list in ink, as Maury's nodding his head. So, let us take a look at that. That's one I think we can, with some confidence, take an informed look at. The tree preservation commitment, I believe we saw on the staff report just recently, you know, we're about trees, and might even be interested in having a discussion with that same tree commission in terms of some ways we can advance the objectives onsite. I touched on the fact that we've got a planting program that commits to some pretty substantial trees. And if the objective is to do it onsite, we can look at that. Or if the objective is to do something that relates to the property, again, I think that's, I've used the term aligned interest a lot tonight. I think that's one where we probably have some alignment. So, we'll take a look at that as well.
Well, as I said, I think the tree commission is interested in a 20K contribution for trees to be planted elsewhere in the city to be administered, much like the stormwater utility.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I've got some questions and comments, but let's just keep this hearing moving on. So, I'm going to save those for the last part of this conversation. And why don't we go ahead and go back to the speakers we've got? So, I'm going to call the speakers out. If there's anyone else who did not yet submit a speaker slip, please do so now. Our first speaker is Marty Mizerv, followed by Ms. Schultz. Welcome.
Good evening, and congratulations to the successful candidates for their reelections. My name is Marty Mizerv. I am at 708 Berry Street. And I'll start out by saying, the Class-A office is certainly something the city has been asking for, for decades. And I'm very pleased to see that in the project. But I'd like to speak tonight to other commercial possibilities of this project. I shared with you a while ago an article from The Atlantic chronicling the retail meltdown of the last two years. As you contemplate this development and the careful package of uses the developer proposes, and as you look ahead to the magical 10 acres at the high school site, I think that there are some interesting things to consider. As The Atlantic points out, the GDP has been growing for eight years, unemployment is down, gas prices have stabilized, and wages are slowly growing, yet the retail sector is crashing. What is happening? They point out three trends. One, people are shopping online in record numbers. It's never been easier to do so, and a double whammy then hits the stores and malls. People aren't making their purchases in person, so they're not strolling through the centers and making other impulsive incidental purchases while they're there. Two, there is a surplus now of malls and brick-and-mortar stores. Quite simply, success led to overbuilding, which then led to the inevitable closures we are seeing today. Few retailers, if any, are looking to expand. Three, spending patterns are shifting. People are seeking experiences rather than material things. Travel is booming. Restaurants are thriving. In fact, in 2016, for the first time ever, Americans spent more money in restaurants and bars than in grocery stores. I'm sorry, I had to put that in. Social media has driven people to seek out activities that translate well to a Facebook or Instagram post. So, what are the lessons for us? Hotels, restaurants, coffee shops and other gathering places, fitness and swimming centers, locally-owned businesses, and venues such as Creative Cauldron are the magnets that draw people to a place today. The proposed development at Broad in Washington is designed to take advantage of the opportunities the market is presenting. In doing so, it promises to create a vibrant gathering place that will invite people from the region to explore our city. I encourage you to give first reading to this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Hall. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Schultz, and I, along with my husband, Ambassador Eric Schultz, own 107 Lawton Street. As you know, we are the only house that directly abuts the proposed development, and will be the most affected property by this project and its construction. We've been very outspoken about our sincere reservations towards the sheer size, mass, and design of this complex. We've asked repeatedly that the building does not exceed 35 feet along our property line. With this proposal, right now, we'll have six floors of apartments facing our backyard and dozens of tenants looking down into our windows from above. This apartment complex will invade our privacy and will negatively affect our comfort and the use of our backyard. We've worked diligently with the developer. We and our neighbors came up with a creative solution to flip the pool courtyard away from Broad Street toward neighborhood and our property to create more of a buffer zone. But we still have serious reservations as to the overwhelming height and size of this building, especially in the back of our property. I'd like to point out that the building is only 22 feet away from our fence at the back of our property. On Slide 14, everybody's showing 42 feet and 60 feet, conveniently forgetting to put 22 feet. Another point I would like to make tonight, from everything I've heard, Paul Street City is trying to move towards more, being more walkable, pedestrian-friendly city. Yet, in Insight's latest proposal, there are no modern transportation solutions, no Uber pickup or drop-off zone, no carpool area or metro shuttle stop, no cell phone waiting area, no Creative Cauldron drop-off zone. We are very worried that all these activities will be pushed to Lawton Street as the closest and safest stopping area. As of now, before this project is even approved or constructed, we already see an increased flow of cars using Lawton Street and turning left on Columbia Street as a cut through to avoid the congested Washington-Broad intersection. Once the building is constructed and occupied, we are concerned that the residents will also be using Lawton Street as a shortcut. It's much easier to take two right turns than a left turn through two lanes of busy traffic. We are very concerned that on weekends, we'll have no place to park our own cars in front of our own houses because of strangers and restaurant goers will be parked to visit local establishments. The current traffic analysis is nearly three years old and needs an update. I'd like to emphasize the need for safety. Madison Park on our street has lots of children playing soccer three, four times a week. We'd like to see effective traffic and parking management measures that will protect the Lawton residents and park visitors from increased traffic. Perhaps a 24/7 restricted parking with a permit sticker or one-way traffic movement on certain times of day, like it's done on South Cherry and North Roosevelt. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Ms. Hall, followed by Ed Galick, if I pronounced that correctly. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Laura Hall, and I reside at 2923 Johnson Road. And I'm here tonight, once again, to urge you to approve the Broad in Washington project for the first reading this evening. Being a part of this vibrant redevelopment project in the heart of the city center will be an incredible boon to Creative Cauldron and its patrons, the lion's share of which live and reside in the city and greater Falls Church area. I've said this before, but we are especially blessed to be partnering with a team that has demonstrated such vision and passion for the arts. Rick Housler and Todd Hitt, two winners of the Arts Council of Fairfax County Philanthropist of the Year awardees. How incredible and rare is that? Just contemplate that for a moment, and I challenge you to name another development team with a similar distinction across the metropolitan area. In all of our meetings over the past several months, this development team has shown us their true colors. They're not just bricks-and-mortar developers building infrastructure merely to turn a profit. They are community builders. They understand the impact and synergy that their developments must have if they're going to nurture a sense of place, if they're going to have a long-lasting positive impact. I'm thrilled to contemplate a new permanent home for Creative Cauldron in a black box theater at the Broad in Washington development. But as someone who lives in greater Falls Church and now spends 90% of my disposable income here in the city, sorry, it's not more, because I'm an artist, but I'm equally excited about the development itself. The inviting public spaces, the pocket park, the Upper Plaza, where we anticipate our patrons and participants will enjoy gathering before, after a performance, or during the lazy days of summer places that our campers can, might provide a sneak preview for a performance, impromptu, in the middle of the afternoon, a little touch of that experience that Marty reserved or mentioned in her comments. We love the idea that our patrons, who come from all around the metro area, will have access to first-class restaurants, including existing ones, like our beloved Claire &amp; Dawn's and our Gia's. We love the idea of a residential lobby that will be the access point for our theater patrons, with the potential of an open flow into the theater for larger community events. We've built our, we've built our heart in this community. As you know, the clock is ticking for Creative Cauldron, and our current lease is expiring in June of 2019. This represents our best hope for securing a permanent home and a future. We are deeply rooted in the heart of this community, so I urge you to finally move forward tonight so that this project can begin review by boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ed Galick, followed by Mary Chavez. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, my name's Ed Galick, and together with my wife, Linda Zemke, we own the house at 201 East Broad Street, right at the corner of Lawton and Broad. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you a few of our concerns. First, we oppose the 65-foot height. The lower Lawton section of this project is directly opposite our house, and it creates a number of issues. Our, the windows on two floors of our house look directly into this building. And I, it's not much of an exaggeration to say you have to stick your head out the windows to actually see sky. So, this is not a light issue. It's like, what's the quality of the rooms? They almost look like they become interior rooms, and you're looking into a corridor. As you turn, if you're going down Broad Street and you turn onto Lawton, this is a stark incompatibility with this project and all the residential houses along Lawton. If you're on Broad Street driving toward Seven Corners, or conversely, and you look at our house, and we move into the project, there's a huge difference. Our house looks like a little mini-house, and it's going to have a dramatic impact on the value of that house. It's going to be very hard to get comps. You're going to find, how are you going to get a comp on a two-story brick colonial, pretty good shape, next to this mammoth building? Where are you going to get the comps? It's hard enough, as you know, to get comps under normal circumstances. So, that's an issue. Second concern has to do with the gateway. We oppose the gateway if the gateway is going to be installed on our side of the street. The gateway's going to cause traffic issues. It's going to, it's going to make, it's going to invite people to turn on Lawton because it's a much better, lower view. And what's going to, and in addition, as you're driving down Broad Street, there's likely congestion. I've already mentioned the buses, but there's also an entrance to this project right on Broad Street, near where the bus stop's likely to be. And cars going in and out of the garage of this project is going to cause congestion problems. And a way to shortcut that is to use Lawton as a cut through. That's something to think about. Also, just the installation or construction of the gateway is going to have collateral damage on a lot of our landscaping. We've got a great lawn. We've probably had lawn service for maybe 10 years or more. If I didn't mention, we've owned this house since 1979. The trees were strategically picked. We planted four really nice dogwoods. They're about eight years old now, and some of them have to be moved. And we just don't want to take the risk of having them moved and then making sure that they get reestablished. And then the third thing I'll mention, oh, so, we're not, we're not opposed to a gateway if it's not on our side. If Insight wants to put it on their side, that's fine. If Insight doesn't want to do a gateway, they can use those funds for other improvements. Then lastly, thirdly, we're worried about the glass that's going to be used on the Lawton side of Creative Cauldron. That the glass, the issue I've got is at night, there's a possibility that the light from inside Creative Cauldron will actually, will be visible from our house. And having a light at night in, for a commercial use, just seems like it's really, that's really not, we don't really want to do that. But the solution is, the solution is there, to use dark sky lighting. Frosty glass is not enough. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak with you.
Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Our last speaker is Mary Chavez. And again, if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter, this is your last opportunity. Welcome.
Mayor Tarter, Vice Mayor Connolly, members of the City Council. My name is Mary Chavez. I live at 215 Lawton Street, and I welcome this opportunity to comment again on the proposed Broad in Washington project. The city manager, on behalf of the council, sent a list of 17 desired improvements to the developers four months ago. Two of these, removing the three-bedroom apartments and providing further retail commitments, have been addressed. Replacing the three bedrooms with a higher number of two-bedroom apartments, and including in the voluntary concessions, a commitment to 13,800 square feet exclusively for restaurant use, plus a two-year pledge to try to attract a specialty grocer. The developers have also shifted density away from the neighborhood, raising the height on Broad Street for the T1 lot, and retaining height on lower Lawton at 65 feet while extending that height further up Lawton Street and overriding a previous concession. Are these steps sufficient to move forward? Do they meet the city's request for the project to at least meet the median net fiscal income per acre of the eight other recent mixed-use development projects? Technically, the apartment changes and the restaurant commitments appear to produce a median of 356,000 net fiscal income per acre, which is above the 307,000 target that the council and the city manager set. 301 West 301 West Broad is very similar in the number of apartments and acreage to Broad and Washington. It has a virtually identical actual net fiscal income per acre at $360,000, but it includes a very large Harris teater, which was guaranteed before the project was endorsed by city council. How does the Broad and Washington project produce a similar number with no certainty on the future retail? The numbers assume full value for the office building and the committed restaurant space based on model projections. Does this give us full confidence in this number? I'm not so sure, and would recommend that in the absence of actual leases, the city require that the projected tax revenues be provided by the developer, even if the restaurants don't materialize, if we're to use this assumption as the basis for moving forward. On balance, this remains a project that is primarily residential in space that was intended to be high-density commercial. It would convert a T1 transitional lot to B2 and mixed-use with no commercial revenues projected for this lot in order to load it with apartments. The height of the project on Lower Lawton remains excessive and not compatible with the residents across the street. A number of other improvements desired by council regarding design, quality of materials, environmental issues, and concerns about the adequacy of parking, vehicle egress, the impact on traffic, and safeguards for bordering neighborhoods remain. Are we ready to move ahead, or should we insist that these be addressed first to assure this is a first-class project fitting what the city desires? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless I see one else come forward to the speaker slip, I'm going to close this hearing to the public, and it will be with council. Let's move now to council comments.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we continue the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Do we have a second on that? All right, we do have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we will continue on. So now this hearing is with council. Are there council comments? Do folks want to comment? Presumably, your questions have been answered. Does anyone have any comments before we move to a vote? Mr. Duncan?
I do. I mean, I've worked up about 12 index cards worth of questions here, and I'm aware from the body language that that might seem to be a bit much for folks, but I would actually like to hear from the mayor, who never gets to really speak on these things until, you know, we're at the very end of things.
Sure. All right, I can do that. I can do that. Tay, let me also say, your 12 cards, go for them, just make them quick if you can. But I do have some comments. One, I appreciate the progress that has been made, and I do think progress has been made on this case. Every case that I have supported in recent years has had a very compelling retail component. We've sort of stopped approving buildings with the hope that they'll get filled up with what we want, and instead have insisted in writing that they provide a type of retail or something that we're interested in. And so we've gotten the Harris teater, which I think's been great for the city. The Fresh Market did not work out, but because of the leverage we had, the fact that there was a written commitment to open the Fresh Market, we were allowed to, or able to work and get a target, which I think is great for the city. I'm not seeing that here yet, which is some concern to me. So one of the things I'd like to see is a commitment for a grocery store. I was excited when this project came in originally with the Whole Foods, and I was disappointed and sorry to see that the Whole Foods went away. I don't blame the developer, I understand the nature of the business and the nature of Whole Foods in particular. Nonetheless, I would like to see a commitment, not just to try for two years, if we had tried at the Fresh Market for two years, we'd end up with a gym or some other use there right now, but actually a commitment to open a specialty or smaller grocery store, not at 6,000 square feet, but more like 10, which would accommodate a Trader Joe's or Lidl or whatever is in that space. So that would be the one request I would have, to seek a grocery store of approximately 10,000 square feet, a commitment, not just to try, but to deliver it. This is probably the primary retail space, or best retail space in the city. We have a million cars going by every month. If there's a place in the city where you can deliver high-quality retail, to me, it is this site. People say, well, we can't support another grocery store. We're not supporting a grocery store, the region supports grocery stores, the million cars that go through the city, they support it. They may be heading to Maryfield or Arlington or Tysons, but we want them to stop and shop in our city. When they stop and shop in Falls Church, they pay sales tax. Sales tax pays for schools and all the great things we want to do in the city. So retailers' services are not limited to the people who live in the city, therefore the region. And so I'd rather have people come here to shop and spend their money than us go somewhere else and spend ours. So again, I would ask for that commitment. Secondly, I appreciate the change in the unit mix to eliminate the three-bedroom. I continue to have concern about the two-bedroom sedan. We are trying, as a city, I think, to attract millennials and other folks like that, and so I would ask you to take a second look at that as well. I'd like to also see material boards at our next hearing that we come to, so we have an idea exactly what materials are promised. We've had some buildings that have turned out maybe not as we had hoped or planned or wished, and I think material boards create certainty for everyone that, in fact, we're all getting what we think we are and you're delivering what you think you are as well. I have a question or a comment for staff, which is just on our fiscal modeling. I would say I have some concern as well, is that these buildings age, that the model changes, ours does not, it's stagnant or static. And so that was something that I would say, that the numbers may look one way at day one, but 20 years later, I think they can look much different. And so I'd ask that in the future, we consider that and maybe make some changes to our models or the possibility of additional assumptions. I've heard some, I think, very good points from some of the neighbors tonight. I'd like to see those continue to be worked on, including the Schulz's, who are directly impacted, but also the other neighbors with respect to traffic, parking, and all the things that we try to do as a community to protect neighbors who are immediately adjacent or abutted to commercial development. So we need to continue to do those things. I thank the developers for what you've done to date. I know a lot of changes have come to this building, and I appreciate those. I do have some concerns as well, I heard the brick goes up two floors. I'd love to see a four-sided building where we don't stop at floor two, but actually go up to the top, and so I'd ask you to continue that, contemplate that as well. I guess I would just sort of make a general comment as well with respect to VCs. People talk about things, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. To me, at the end of the day, it needs to be in the VCs. So if there's anything you say you're going to do, I don't want to hear it, I want to see it in writing, and then that way, we both know what we're all agreeing to, and that years from now, we can all look at that document as to what you're going to be doing. I think that's probably what I've got. I may have something else as time goes on, but how's that? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will not be able to equal his succinctness, so I'll just say, you know, we're asked when we vote for projects like this if they're exemplary in order to warrant a special exception. I think this project has tremendous potential to be exemplary. I, you know, agree with what Ms. Hall says, and Ms. Mazzarve too, about the potential for this to be a really unique destination/location. For all the reasons that the mayor outlined, and some more of my own that I have on my cards here, I just, I don't feel that we're quite there yet. And, you know, everyone in the known universe is aware that I am generally supportive of economic redevelopment in the city. I fully hope to be able to be supportive of this project, but if asked to vote right here and right now, I would not be able to vote yes. My preference would be to give the applicant another couple of weeks to address some of the concerns that have been brought up here tonight, which I won't say that they're new, but I don't believe have been worked as hard as some of the issues related to massing and density that have been our focus for many months, if not years. I would prefer that the applicant be given time to do that without the burden of a vote that would be negative on my side, but that's the will of the council. But as of where we stand right now, I think I would not be able to support this request tonight. Thank you.
All right, other comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thank you for coming in, and I have seen this project make very good progress in the time that we've looked at it over the last two years. In the four years that I've been on council, we've gotten a lot of these staff reports, and I've never seen one this fat and this thorough before, so I want to commend staff on having the opportunity to really review and put in so many different comments. So because I'm not the expert on these things, and they are, I would ask you to, there's 141 things in there that our staff is saying need to be addressed, and I think that's what needs to be addressed, are those 141 things. The other thing that is not in here, and it goes to the unit mix, the schools usually put out something in November or December about the unit mix and residency, and I'd like to have that run through the Economic Development Office as well, just to see how this fits in with the models that we have and the experience that we have. Because we've been at this now for 10 years, Mr. Shields, 12 years of mixed-use development, and I feel like we need to learn, take advantage of the lessons that we've learned and the mistakes that we've made, so that this project is the best that it can possibly be.
Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Z?
Well, I know that's a very deep subject, I don't mean to be punny. I just don't really know how to approach this project, because I think that we just say, come back in another couple of weeks, come back in another couple of months, not much is going to change, and the only thing that we know with certainty that will change is that the money available for building apartments, such as they are mixed multifamily residences, the money is softening up. We don't know what's next, but faced with everything else, it's entirely possible this project will die within the next six months if we don't approve it, so. And for those that think something else will come along, and that something else is not on the horizon as far as I'm concerned, and the larger picture to me is that we need, we need something of finance with certainty, regardless of where I would like it to be, and it's not. We're about to build a very huge, expensive high school, and so we cannot on one hand say, you need to do more, and then on the other hand, say, we're about to spend a lot of taxpayers' money to build a high school without looking at the economic development offset. Well, people, this is part of the economic development offset. Let's get this project done. I'm ready to move it.
All right. Ms. Oliver? We can go, we can either have a motion, we can have comments, it doesn't matter which way we do it, whatever you want to do.
Let me move it.
All right.
I move the grand first reading for TO 17-09 referred TR 17-17, TR 17-18, and TO 17-09 to the following boards, commissions, and committee organizations. Plan Commission, Architectural Advisory Board, Economic Development Authority, House of Commission, Environmental Sustainability Council, Tree Commission, Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, Recreation and Parks Advisory Board, Arts and Humanities Council, Falls Church, Library Board of Trustees, Historical Commission, Human Services Advisory Council, Village Preservation and Improvement Society, and Greater Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, and schedule second reading and public hearing for TO 17-09, and public hearing and final action on TR 17-17, and TR 17-18 for April 9, 2018, and advertise the same according to law.
I'm looking at the city attorney, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think that's fine. You can go forward with that as the complete motion for all of the actions, unless somebody wants to separate how you handle one.
All right, do we have a second for the motion that's on the table?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded on the table. Ms. Oliver, you got a comment?
I just, my comment was just that I have faith in our boards and commissions. I know that that's 100 to 200 people that are going to take a very close look at this over the next four months. I think that we've seen the developer be responsive to the neighbors, and now I think it's time for the developer to have a chance to respond to the other members of our community that will push them hard on the things which are important to them. And I want to go forward with that so that we can continue that process, because I am confident that it will be productive and that this project will be even better at the end of that term.
All right, other comments? Nothing? Mr. Snyder?
Well, thank you very much. I want to thank the developers, I want to thank the citizens, neighbors, particularly Creative Cauldron, for all the input in this process. So where are we right now? Well, we, the most recent planning we've done for this area was for commercial. We also know that this intersection in particular, we've been told literally for decades, is where you can put your commercial. Every other area is suitable for mixed use, this is where you need to put commercial. Plus, our own ordinance puts the burden of proof for really extraordinary project on the developer. It's not our burden to prove that the developer shouldn't, it's the developer's burden to come forward and explain how they comply with the statutes and how they otherwise meet the legal standards. And in theory, this project would be a good project. My interest is in making sure that certain things are addressed, and I'll go through those in a minute, but that this project actually occurs the way the vision, so well-expressed by some folks, actually becomes reality. And I view our job on the city council as fundamentally to determine what are the fundamental building blocks of the project and the finances of the project. Boards and commissions have other responsibilities, but we have a core responsibility of knowing what this project is fundamentally before it moves forward to them. My problem is, at this point, I don't know what this project really is. I know what the vision is, I know what the hope is, I know, quote, "what the commitments are." I also know that the city manager said that there needs to be a lot of work. I would prefer that that work be done here as quickly as possible before we move it out to boards and commissions. So what are some of the issues that I see? Well, first of all, we have, as the developer has responded to my question, we have no legally enforceable contracts, either on the other parts of the office building, other than what they'll occupy, as well as all the other commercial areas, with the exception of Creative Cauldron. That's point number one. So I don't know what the commercial components really are in this project, and they are absolutely fundamental to me and I think the long-term interest of the city. Second, as a corollary to that, all the projections at this point are just numbers on a page until we have more certainty, legally enforceable contracts, which we don't have at this point. Another point that was made, we know we're going to get apartments, we know we're going to get nearly 300 apartments. Again, I would challenge whether that's a housing unit that the city really needs at this point, and yet, we know we're going to get that. What we don't know is what we're going to get commercially, what we have is, quote, "commitments." The next point I want to make is that I think one of the speakers tonight made a very good point, there hasn't been a lot of really creative thinking about transportation here, both transportation to and in the site, and transportation around, and how we protect the interests of Lawton Street going forward, and that's partly a city issue that we definitely need as part of the final work on this project, to assure Lawton Street that their interests will be protected. The massing clearly is an issue partly resolved apparently at this point, but not fully resolved. So there continue to be some neighborhood issues. The best part of the project is that it proposes a location for Creative Cauldron, something that I think is a wonderful addition to this community. But frankly, the rest of the project is a big question mark, and I'm reluctant to move forward to boards and commissions until I know what the project is that I'm asking them to make comments on. All I have is a vision, I don't have a project at this point. And for that reason, I believe we would be best to spend a little bit more time on this project right now, to get legally enforceable commitments for occupancy, so that we know that the numbers are valid, before I move forward to boards and commissions, because ultimately, I view that as our principal responsibility on the part of city council. So I'll be voting no to carry this project forward. I hope when it comes... I hope when it comes back to us, one way or the other, that these, all these questions are answered, the neighborhood questions, the certainty on commercial development. I've expressed my view about what I'd like to see residentially, and so, and along with the transportation issues. At this point, I just don't simply feel that the developer has carried forward sufficiently its burden of moving forward. But I really hope they can and will, because I'd like to vote for this project. Thank you.
All right. Other, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I changed my mind. So I think the tough thing with any of these projects is kind of our decision to kind of weigh the greater good with the private benefit. So I don't fault you guys for changing, you know, your three bedrooms with adding more two bedrooms. You have to make money at the end of the day, so I get that. And I think our responsibility up here is to make sure that we protect and buffer neighborhoods. And so when I go back and look at our list of threshold questions that we gave to you back in July, I think it's 18 in total in different buckets, I think we've actually made substantive progress against a number of them. I don't think we're done, but I do appreciate the work that's been done to date. And I think it's a subjective assessment whether we think enough work has been done. I think while we may end up voting differently tonight, I think we subjectively probably disagree on how much work has been done, but clearly more work should get done. And so my expectation is that regardless of how we vote, that you continue working with the neighborhood at the same caliber you've done so far. The 49 pages of comments on Attachment 7 that staff has diligently put together, I expect a diligent response from you guys on all 49 pages of those, and more work will be needed. But I will support this tonight, because I do feel like you guys have made good progress, and I think it merits more work. But know that this approval, if you get one tonight, is not an unfettered green light. I think our expectation is that you guys will continue working this hard so that you can get more support at the end of the day. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I will be voting yes, but you shouldn't interpret that in support as unfettered as well, and that I will have an expectation that we'll make significant progress on the issues, at least that I've raised, to continue to get my support. So anyway, let's go ahead to a vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break, clear the room, and move on to the rest of business? Thank you very much. Getting close to being done. The next item looks like it's a resolution to endorse our fiscal year applications for revenue-sharing funding, but I'll let the city clerk make -- so can you read the next item for us? Call the next item.
Sure, sure. We have TR-17-29, Resolution to Endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2018 Applications for Revenue Sharing Funding.
All right. Mr. Shields?
Counsel, I will say at the outset that we have a number of transportation grant funding items coming to you. This is just one of them. And at your next meeting, we'll have a fuller discussion of some other grants that we would propose coming forward that will have a bearing on the campus plan and other key initiatives that the city council has. What this application, though, for is for revenue-sharing grants. That's a 50-50 match, so we have to have local funds and the amount of 50% for each of these projects. And what we have laid out in terms of the priorities for these applications would be funding for South Washington Street and Annandale Road intersection improvements, so that will help us complete the South Washington Street up to project, which is underway right now, but carry that all the way up to Annandale. Then, Annandale and South Maple Avenue intersection improvements that will allow us potentially put a roundabout in at that intersection, but we'll study it, we'll come up with design solutions that the council will be able to review with the planning commission. And then lastly, South Maple Avenue roadbed reconstruction and streetscape improvements. When we took our walking tour, we talked about shrinking these streets down, making them more, rather than sort of the big express lanes, how they function right now, shrinking them down, carry out our vision to make them more properly scaled for walkability. The Annandale Road project does have funding that will help us with the Big Chimneys project, and so really, it's from Gundry down to South Washington. So it's just one more source of funds to help us complete those neighborhood traffic calming projects along that corridor.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move approval of TR-17-29.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's on the second?
Second.
Mr. Zee on the second. Is there any member of the public who wishes comment on this matter? Is there any member of the public here? All right. So the matter's closed to the public. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, why don't you go ahead and call?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to the consent items.
And I could just briefly summarize those for the city council. The first is authorization for a contract to anchor construction in the amount of $937,620. This will be paid for out of the sanitary sewer fund. It's for a pipe-bursting project. What pipe-bursting means is we expand the pipe so that it can carry, convey more sewerage through it. The reason we would want to do this specifically in our most immediate project would be to relieve backflow issues that we've had in the Dorchester neighborhood, and council will recall the complaints we've gotten from those, in those areas, when we have big rainfall events. We've studied every option. We do acknowledge that this is expensive, but it is a capacity issue in this area, and we believe this will solve the problem. We will also use this contract. This is a four-year contract that we're asking for, so we would do other capacity-expansion projects potentially using this firm in the future, based on what our sewer-capacity model calls for. The other item is an authorization to extend our contract with Davenport. Davenport is our financial advisor, and they also take our bonds to market. So this is a very important contract for the city. We have traditionally paid for these financial advisory services on a percentage basis. In other words, the amount of debt that we take to market, that's how they get compensated. Because of the significant size of our capital improvement program, we have sought to change the terms of this contract for the extension period. For the next four years, we would instead have a flat fee, essentially put them on retainer, and the four-year cost is not to exceed $300,000. So they will no longer be compensated, particularly for the high school period, they will not be getting essentially a brokerage or a commission on the sale of the bonds. Instead, they're just going to give us flat advice and be paid on retainerage, and then take those bonds to market as they traditionally have done. So there's a change in the way that's being compensated. I think, hopefully, I explained that in a way that you understand, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Bawa was instrumental in working with Davenport on this new contract structure with them, and we had a discussion with Budget and Finance Committee on this as well prior to bringing this to the city council. Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions on it, although it is on consent, so I guess.
Any, yeah, all right. So if there's any questions, I guess we remove it from consent. If there are not any questions, let's go vote on it.
May I remove number one from the consent and ask a question?
All right.
Mr. Shields, is this activity that's described the same as was being carried on last Tuesday that Mr. Adriance came to speak to you about on Wednesday, or is that different?
This is different. It's, but similar. What Mr. Adriance came and spoke with us about was just our traditional pipelining, which is a wonderful process where we are able to improve the flow ratios of our sewerage and restore the lines in a very low-cost and effective way. This contract actually is to do something more. It's to actually go in and break the pipes and expand them so they can carry more, and then reline them on the interior. So it's a bit more complex, and that's why there's --
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is not to become an authority on all of that, but just to be aware that if there's anything that's more involved than what was done last Tuesday night, I just want to make sure that we have a, you know, public notice process that will alert everybody along the line of the work that's being done, that, you know, there's going to be some significant lighting and noise and gases and so forth going on. So I assume this outfit knows all about that, but the example last Tuesday night, I don't know if it's right to say it felt a little short of the mark, but at least there were some complications that had to be worked through.
That's correct, and we've spoken with the individual that you brought to my office. This process is one we're very familiar with. We've done over half of the system, and there are occasions where gas, you know, it does involve gases and chemicals. Typically, those will not enter a household unless there's a problem with someone's sewer lines, but that does happen from time to time, and we try to work, you know, with people when that does happen.
So it's just a public communication thing. If they're going to be on the street doing whatever they're doing, people just need to be aware.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So unless there's any other questions or comments, and no member of the public, or I'll put it out to the public, any member of the public wish to speak this matter, seeing none. Matter's closed to the public. Should we now just have a typical motion and do, go ahead and do a roll-call vote on this, then, Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to do something with this first item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the item previously listed under the consent as number one.
All right. And do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Can, you repeat the second. I missed that.
That's me. Second.
Ms. Conley?
And that motion is fine?
There is a written motion.
There's a motion in --
Oh, gosh. I doubt I don't have it in my hand. This hole? Yeah, no, it's this thing here. Sorry, didn't have that in hand. Oh, Lord. Well, that's what I get for asking a question. I move to authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to award a contract to Anchor Construction Corporation an amount up to $37,620 for pipe-bursting services and renew the contract annually for four, for additional one-year term, subject to appropriation of funds by city council in the budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Wait a second. We have a second, all right. Mr. Snyder?
So I've been asked by a citizen to compare our work with our priorities that we set forth for this additional revenue stream, which we approved. How is this project consistent with those priorities?
I would just note that this is out of the sanitary sewer fund, and so these are not stormwater funds. You are correct in that the council adopted a watershed plan, and that laid out a series of priorities for investments out of our water, stormwater fund, and we've been staking pretty closely to that. But this is out of the sanitary fund, so it's not, we don't have that similar roadmap. And Mr. Whitfield is here, who can speak to it, but in our sewer-capacity study, I think we do now have a much better data set to identify where we think we will have capacity issues on the sanitary sewer side over the next 10 years, particularly with development. And going forward, that's where we will be targeting and prioritizing our investment in the sanitary sewer side.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I believe we do. Let's go ahead and have the roll call.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
And we have one item on consent. Hopefully, it'll stay that way.
So just to point the process, Mayor, we should normally have considered the consent item first.
I don't know. Madam City Attorney, do you have any thoughts on that?
Anyway, I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So I'm not saying you need to remove it from consent, but you can ask a question, I think, and still, the motion be a valid motion. So what is the source of this funds? It's $300,000 for the four years of work, or $300,000 each of four years?
It's for the four years of work.
Okay. And is some of this reimbursable through the bond projects?
Yes, and so that's how we would intend to pay for all this contract.
Thank you.
All right. So I suggest now that somebody make the official motion that's written out on here.
I will withdraw the motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a motion now to do something with this item that was formerly a consent agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to extend the term of the contract with Davenport Company for financial advisory services for an additional four years in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Zee?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Other business. We've already done the campus planning update, have we not? Mr. Shields? All right.
Could I just make a quick request?
Yes.
So going back to the pipe-bursting thing we approved, if we haven't done it already, since we heard from citizens about issues on Dorchester, could we follow back up with them, let them know that we're going to take care of whatever they had issues with? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have some additional business, just a quick item. Is it appropriate to address that right now?
Yes, it is.
Everyone has it at their desk. First of all, I wanted to brief people on this. At the COG Board of Directors meeting, they approved a letter in support of deductibility of state and local taxes, and so I wanted to first report on that, and secondly, ask the will of the council about the mayor sending a similar letter to our congressional delegation. Would anyone object? Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Just the first time we've met since the excellent program at the COG attended by Mr. Zee and I, and directed in part by our mayor, about development around subway stations. There was some publicity about it that I saw online. I just want to commend the mayor for his involvement in that effort, and look hopefully about the fact that West Falls Church is one of the marquee stations mentioned as a potential area for development, transit-oriented development in the whole metropolitan area. The other question I had is of the clerk or the manager, has the city employees' holiday party date been set?
It has. Friday, the 15th.
12:15, and the service luncheon is the Friday before that, right? Service Awards Luncheon?
That is correct.
15th of December.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And I just wanted to call your attention to the fabulous flyer circulated, no doubt, by our hard-working city clerk, which represents the most significant thing the Economic Development Committee has accomplished all year long, which is finally the, I don't know what you call it, the adorning of our trees with festive holiday lights and an event on Monday, 27th of November, at 6:00 p.m. to let light said lights. Thank you to the clerk, and the staff, and Becky Whitzman, and others, but particularly those for making this happen.
Isn't there a typo on the flyer? Isn't it next year? No, we're going to do it this year. All right.
Next year, we're marching all the way up to Lazy Mikes with the Hardy Light Expansion Plan.
All right. Sounds good. Well, thank you both for all the great work you guys did, you and Letty and company. So greatly appreciate that. I think it'd be a great, great time. What else do we have? Excuse me?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, of course.
Just, I just wanted to remind people that the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that was scheduled for Friday, November 17th, has been rescheduled to Friday, December 1st. So nobody will be there Friday morning. Don't show up.
All right.
And is there an economic working group on this Friday, Mr. Shields?
There is.
There's an economic working group meeting, Ms. Friday, 7:30?
Yes.
Yes. Well, if we're going that far ahead, can we agree on November 30th being the Economic Development Committee meeting that's next, Thursday? Not next, but you're, you're talking about something on the 1st of December, so-
Friday, or something on Friday morning.
Not you, Ms. Oliver.
I just was pointing out that we weren't meeting Friday.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just wanting to, trying to help the clerk publicly notice that we are not meeting on Thanksgiving. That's what got me started because normally the EDC would meet them. So, we're not meeting on Thanksgiving, and we would meet the next Thursday if that's all right with the manager and others, at 9 o'clock.
All right.
Okay.
Is, is there any standing or regional committee liaison reports to be had or be given? Okay. Are there any council member comments that haven't been made already? We have minutes from two previous meetings, one from a year ago and one from a couple of weeks ago. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on either of those?
The, the title of minutes of November 28th needs to be changed from 2017 to 2016.
Wishful thinking.
Yep, good.
Okay.
On the minutes for October 23rd on line 94, the word is since.
God, you're good, Phil. You are so good.
I didn't touch the November-
All right. So, should we vote on these separately? City Attorney? Or should we just, yes, no?
Yes, do them separately.
All right. So, do we have a motion regarding the minutes of October 23rd, 2016?
I move to approve those minutes.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Minutes of November 28th, 2016.
As amended. And I move to approve those minutes as amended.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Is there anything else to be said tonight?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.